Hi.
Councilmember Henley.
Aye.
Councilmember Moss.
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse. Councilmember Tower.
Aye.
Councilmember Wooton.
Aye.
Mayor Dyer.
Aye.
Five votes, seven to zero. You have certified the closed session being in accordance with a motion to recess.
Okay, we will move on to the planning item of Westminster Canterbury on the Chesapeake Bay. Before we get going, I'd like to read the script for speakers. I want to remind everyone that the City Council speaker policy that allows certain representatives of a group to speak for 10 minutes applies only to planning items. All other speakers, whether they're speaking individually or on behalf of a group, will have three minutes to speak. Speakers are reminded that comments during the formal portion of the meeting must be limited to the subject of the item that is being considered by the council at the time you are called. When speakers are called on each item, the clerk will call for those individuals who have signed up to speak. After those who have signed up to speak have spoken, the chair will ask if there are any other speakers who wish to speak on the item at hand. Those speakers will be allowed to speak and will be asked to give their name, address, and telephone number for the clerk to recall. Finally, I call upon all speakers and all persons in the chamber to be civil in their discussion and decorum. Whatever views you hold and wish to express, the City Council wants to hear from you and to ensure that all viewpoints and all persons are respected. The best way to do this is for all of us to strive for civility and respect. Okay, I guess we're ready for the speakers. Oh, and the other thing I'm going to ask all the City Council people, that when you're not speaking, to shut your mics off.
The first speaker is Ben Upl. After Mr. Upl is RJ Nutter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. May I remove my mask for speaking? Thank you. Having, being one who requires masks, I get a taste of how hot they are after a period of time. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, honorable members of our City Council. My name is Ben Upl, and I have the honor of being the CEO of Westminster Canterbury. We are a faith-based, nonprofit, life-plan community, serving the residents of Virginia Beach of all beliefs. Our life-plan community is a term of art. That means we offer three levels of care: independent living, assisted living, and nursing care, all on one campus. Once a citizen of this city qualifies for membership, we offer lifetime health care and financial security, a rare commodity as people face the aging process. Many think that Westminster is only for the rich. I want to dispel that notion right away. In fact, the median income, 50% above, 50% below in our city, is sufficient to meet our admission criteria to make the monthly fees of 28% of our apartments. Entry fees for one-bedroom apartments in the East Tower are priced $5,000 below the average home value in Virginia Beach. This nonprofit organization takes its commitment seriously to affordability. A fact I'm going to reveal tonight that we don't often speak about is that 30% of our independent-living apartments are priced below the cost of actuarial care over the lifetime. In addition to our scholarship programs, in addition to our financial aid, we have a private, quiet subsidy. We subsidize 66% of our independent-living apartments at 22% below the cost of lifetime care. This level of private pricing subsidy goes beyond mere window dressing. It goes to the core of social justice and who we are as a private, faith-based organization. Others tonight will tell you more about our scholarships and our financial aid programs on top of these price subsidies, and we're pretty proud, we are very proud of them, and I'll leave that to others. You already know that Virginia Beach has a desperate need for all types of senior housing. We have an acute and long, predictable, and now looming senior housing crisis that will come home to roost by 2030. That used to sound like a long time away for me, but 2030 doesn't sound like a long time away anymore. Sadly, our city is one of the three worst-prepared metropolitan areas in the country for the silver tsunami that's coming. In case you're interested, the others are Augusta, Georgia, and McAllen, Texas. This fact was publicized nationally by the national consulting and accounting firm Plant Moran in 2019. None of the data I just gave you was created nor paid for by Westminster Canterbury, but our own consultants do confirm it. We are 200 units short today of the very type of housing that we are proposing. Our proposed 22-story tower, 22-story tower, will only add 217 units to this growing deficit. So why here? Why this density? Why now? This is a land-use decision after all. First, the proximity of these parcels to our current campus is exactly what makes them so vital in our fight to remain as affordable as we can be. Proximity allows us to spread our fixed-cost structure of our physical plant and our administrative staff and leadership over more units, making our product more affordable into the future. Westminster must expand to create larger and better assisted-living units. We've modernized every other level of care except that. Assisted living and memory care must be delivered in apartments that are bigger than the standard size of a hotel room. That's no longer acceptable in this market, nor should it be. But to pay for that expansion of assisted living and memory care, we must add more independent-living apartments as well, serving both our needs and the city's senior housing shortage. This application, in short, is about ongoing quality and affordability for our citizens in Virginia Beach by a private, nonprofit organization, not asking for any taxpayer assistance in helping our city with this need. Now I turn to the 22-story issue everyone is talking about. Our proposed height is not a monument to vanity. It is a reasonable accommodation within your power and discretion to grant tonight, and I contend it is even a better land-use decision than a shorter and wider tower would be. 22 stories helped us achieve many benefits in designing this project. First, for context, let me say that we are only asking for six more stories than you've already approved for Cape Henry Towers and Harbor Gate, but those six stories more allow us to serve approximately 1,000 more senior citizens in Virginia Beach over the next 50 years than if we stayed at our existing height. But taller and thinner yields even more benefits. Our lot coverage is now well below 40%, which is also well below the 75% lot coverage requirement for the area. In fact, when we finish, we'll be a lot greener. Our total campus will be only 34.3% lot coverage. More green space is not only beautiful, it provides better drainage, and those are prizes we all gain from. We will generate less stormwater runoff than those parking lots currently generate, and for the first time, we will be treating that stormwater runoff. That will benefit both our neighbors and the Chesapeake Bay. These aspects of our taller, thinner tower earned our application, the endorsement of the Lynn Haven River Now Organization, which has been communicated to many of you by email recently. Taller and thinner also provided greater setbacks. We expanded our setbacks to our neighbors to the east, if the bay is to the front and to the north, to 61 feet from our property line. To be good neighbors, we added an additional 15 feet setback after we were approved by the planning commission. But the most ironic thing, and we didn't think we would change votes in terms of people coming here to support it for that, it was just the right thing to do. The most ironic thing about this debate in my mind has been that the best and the biggest advantage of taller and thinner for that tower, that independent-living tower, is better views, not worse views, that everyone decries. Let me explain. The bay is directly north. If our community is facing the bay, it would be directly ahead, directly north. The vertical view price of those six extra stories pales in comparison to the gain of the better view quarters preserved by shrinking us on the east-west axis by making us thinner. The east-west thinness reduces the appearance of high-rise massing, massing at Shore Drive looking toward the bay, and it preserves the views, much better view quarters, for our existing residents. Now, some may poo-poo that, but they pay their property taxes too. We have 700 citizens in our current east and west tower, and their views in paying their million-dollar of property taxes deserve to be considered along with everyone else. In fact, I was looking the other day, we have about the same number of units in our two towers as exist in all the units between us and Seagate Colony. The incremental shadows of those extra six stories do not impact the beach at summer, and the shadows are only marginally longer for a few hours in the late afternoon in February. You have a shadow study. A few additional points. If we build the exact same mixed-age use condos as exist to our east, traffic would be 20% higher. The city would earn over a million dollars less annually over the property taxes we will be paying when all is said and done if you approve this project, and the identical land use of our neighbors to the east who are objecting would result in more consumption of expensive city services than we do, including education. Loneliness and social isolation are terrible things.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks.
Sorry, the next speaker is RJ Nutter, and after Mr. Nutter is Dick Thurman.
Welcome. Mr. Mayor, a pleasure to be here. Members of council, my name is RJ Nutter. I'm attorney, representing Westminster Canterbury. For the record, I'd like to check with Amanda on something. I understand, Amanda, that I may be granted 10 minutes because of granting others elsewhere.
I think that's the mayor's discretion, the chair.
Mr. Moss.
We give the developer 10 minutes, not 10 minutes per every principal of the developer? I think they took their 10 minutes.
My understanding is that Mr. Nutter would have three minutes.
That's my understanding.
Yeah. Now, let's keep it at three minutes, because we have an ambitious thing, and I'm sure you'll have a chance for a rebuttal.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. I apologize. First, let me say it's a pleasure to be here, and I want to follow up on Ben's presentation to you. And he's done a great job of demonstrating the extraordinary need that exists throughout our region, and particularly in Virginia Beach, for senior housing. One fact he has not relayed to you that's very important. He's indicated to you that the average age of people 65 and older is actually going to increase at two and a half times the rate of people under 65 over the next 20 years. That is amazing. But I think more amazing is in Virginia Beach, one of the things they look at for where do people retire in relationship to where they've lived. Virginia Beach is the second-largest city in the state that has the highest number of people living and retiring in Virginia Beach. We're second of every city in the jurisdictions in the entire state. Virginia Beach is number two. Fairfax County is number one. We'd be, in other words, what this means is not only is there more seniors coming, more seniors in Virginia Beach want to live and stay and retire in Virginia Beach. That is why Mrs. Henley's committee, back in the early, about 15, 20 years ago, Ms. Henley, started looking at senior housing and created Section 235 of the ordinance that we are complying with today. In fact, that's also what led to our becoming a community for a lifetime, which, because it was, we were intent on making sure that young people, our schools, jobs were here for people to live throughout their course of their life, and retirement facilities were available for people to retire here. That's why, in fact, if you look at your agenda, we forget about it, but right at the top of your agenda is Virginia Beach, a community for a lifetime. It's on every agenda you've posted since 2004. So that's the need, and that's why we're here. But the most important thing that Westminster did, even though they had planning commission recommendations, staff recommendations, senior housing committee recommendation, every group we appeared before, we nonetheless wanted to make sure we did not have any detrimental effects on our adjacent property. So let me just tell you what we did. First, the traffic study showed that there's less traffic here than if we developed the same way that our neighbors did. Second, parking. We exceed the parking requirement by over 300 spaces. Most of those are structured at a cost of about $20,000. So you do the math, there's $6 billion in additional parking provided to take cars off of Ocean Shore Avenue. The access into the building was relocated to the west so that we'd take traffic off Ocean Shore Avenue and take it away from the condos to our east. We also redid the accessway for the loading area so that now all loading on that side of the building, except for moving vans when people move in, is done inside the building behind closed doors. That includes trash pickup, deliveries, you name it. In addition to that, we have a setback six times that required by the ordinance. We did a wind study you're going to hear about that produced, it showed, by the way, that the only wind effects by this tower will be on Westminster's property, not on the adjacent property. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Dick Thurman, and after Mr. Thurman is Bill Miller.
Welcome.
Thank you, sir. May I ask everyone that is in favor of Westminster's application to please stand? Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, and honorable members of the City Council. My name is Dick Thurman. I am current chairman of the Board of Directors of Westminster Canterbury and a 40-plus-year resident of Virginia Beach. I know Westminster well. I began my formal relationship in 2010 when I joined our foundation board. But before that, I knew great things about Westminster because they took such great care of my dear friend and mentor Ann Wood, who lived there and thrived for eight years. Westminster is a nonprofit, faith-based organization that allows us to attract and keep residents who would not normally be able to reside there. Through our foundation, Westminster gives grants to those who have served the community and churches. It also helps those who outlive their money. We help pay their bills and provide spending money to give people peace of mind and financial dignity. People of modest means, such as teachers, city employees, church employees, can enjoy a tremendous retirement lifestyle with health care and financial security for life. In my day job as chairman of the board of Howard Hannah William E. Wood Real Estate, I'm acutely aware of the current and future housing needs of Hampton Roads. You heard from Ben Upl about the national study a few years ago that our city is one of the most underserved cities for senior housing. We know we have a problem waiting to be a crisis. Our local study suggests the city is short by 200 units right now. Our senior population will grow to nearly 50% in the next decade, and the problem will get much worse. The city's strategic plan says our leaders want us to be a community for a lifetime, and being in real estate, I can say that is a wise goal. The expansion of Westminster Canterbury's campus can help make your goal a reality with no public taxpayer financial contribution, and that's worth repeating, using no taxpayers' dollars. Yet, in our end, we pay city taxes over $1 million a year with very few city services. With our expansion, our taxes in the city will more than double. The project is budgeted at approximately $300 million and is the largest private development project in the city's history, with, once again, no public dollars. Let me ask you, how many projects of that magnitude come before the city without asking for financial assistance? As I said before, let's not wait till we face a crisis. Let's start to address the future of senior housing with the largest private project in city's history. This is a wonderful opportunity for our city to meet the senior housing needs with a nonprofit organization that has been part of our community for years. I respectfully ask for your yes vote on Westminster's expansion application. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Bill Miller, and after Mr. Miller is Randy Royal.
Welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens, I want to give a little teeny bit of background first. My family moved down in 1938, my granddad, and then we moved down in 1948. Have seen a lot of things change along Shore Drive. You know, we went from Prince Anne Kennedy to Virginia Beach. The, where I grew up, was the Keeling Farm, then it was the Sire Farm, now it's Great Neck Point. Y'all remember, I'm just bringing you, giving you a little bit of history. Seaview Beach, Clads Market, Bayville Farms, all of those things. After, leading up to why I'm speaking today, after I spent a first career as a schoolteacher, coach, and principal, I took over a family business on Shore Drive right near Westminster Canterbury, Duck Inn Restaurant. And let's talk about Westminster Canterbury because I was involved with that, not financially or otherwise, from the beginning. I don't think there's any other entity in the city of Virginia Beach besides getting Episcopalians and Presbyterianians together, which, that's a miracle in itself, but there is no other entity in the city, whether business, residential, or community, or nonprofit, in Shore Drive or the rest of the city, that has done more for our citizens, for our reputation, and for the quality of life that we share. I want to talk for a minute about why that is. I've been associated with folks in this area for a long time. The board that runs Westminster Canterbury, if you look at who they are and look at Southside Hampton Roads, you're going to find the leaders of many of the businesses, the churches, the nonprofits, and the educational leaders in area. They have created and continue to improve on one of the most highly-rated and one of the most highly-regarded retirement communities on the east coast. Dan Dickinson was their first, Reverend Dan Dickinson was their first CEO. Dan and I were friends. We spent time together down at the restaurant. And also, while he was kicking this whole thing off, while he got Westminster Canterbury off the ground, he also was serving the community. He formed the Cape Henry Rotary Club. He was the initiator of that, and they did so many things for all of us on Shore Drive. And they also, that board is providing rehab facilities and care, not only for the residents of Westminster Canterbury, but I have friends who've been to the Hoy Center just because they had room and were willing to help other people out. They're providing the scholarships that Ben Upl just talked about to folks who, I have some friends who live in Westminster Canterbury who, as former teachers, could not have afforded it had they not done that. But then you look at the...
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
You don't give a teacher three minutes.
Or a politician.
The next speaker is Randy Royal, and after Mr. Royal is Perry Acoc.
Hey, welcome.
Evening, Mayor. Members of council, Randy Royal, civil engineer for the project. I'm here to speak with you briefly about the engineering, specifically traffic, storm drainage, and parking. That's yours. Traffic study was done in November of 2019. We've had a little bit of trouble here lately doing traffic studies with COVID because there wasn't as much traffic on the road. In November, the traffic was all there. They got good numbers. Findings were no adverse impacts on the roadways or intersections. That was confirmed by staff. Starfish-Shore Drive intersection operates at a level of service B, as in boy. D is good. It's what we strive for. Frequently, we have Es and Fs around here. B is unheard of. That's phenomenal. That's absolutely no problem. The completed project is estimated to result, actually, in an overall reduction of traffic from what can come out of there by what's existing and by by-right zoning. So we see no problems with traffic. Stormwater. Properties to be developed are almost entirely impervious today. Redevelopment will maintain a similar amount of impervious area, but will release less runoff based on the new rules. We also will have water quality, which was mentioned earlier. That wasn't done back in the day. We have very strict standards now. So with that, there will be less runoff, and what runoff there is will be cleaner for the bay, and of course, they're trying to keep a lot of green area, as Mr. Upl mentioned earlier. Parking, we've supplied 300 extra parking spaces, as you've heard. As Mr. Nutter said, they're about 20,000 a pop for a parking garage. By comparison, Harbor's Edge in Norfolk has about eight tenths of a parking space per unit. This project has 1.2 parking spaces per unit. That's a 50% increase. Plenty of parking. I see absolutely no problem with anybody spilling over onto the public streets. Don't see any problems with the engineering. I will stand by for questions. Hope you'll see fit to approve this project, and thank you for the time.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Perry Acoc, and then after Mr. Acoc is Catherine Bernstein.
Welcome. Thank you all. I appreciate your time this evening. I certainly want to be as quick as possible. It's wonderful to get this opportunity to share some facts about Westminster Canterbury, Chesapeake Bay with you. My name is Perry Acoc. I am the founder and president of a company called Longevity Markets. We do research and advice to communities that are trying to better older lives through communities. I actually lived here in the late 90s, met my wife, who's from here, and since then, have worked with all the communities here in this market: Westminster Canterbury, Atlantic Shores, even Harbor's Edge over there in Norfolk. I've also worked with about half of the communities here in the Commonwealth of Virginia and about one out of six of the communities like Westminster Canterbury around the country since I left Virginia Beach. I love living here. I really miss it. I got to go fishing last night with a good friend of mine and enjoy some of the things that are wonderful about this, and it doesn't surprise me that Virginia Beach has grown a lot in that last 20 years and that there's a lot of growth getting ready to come. Some other folks have talked about it, but the demographics are pretty significant of what's getting ready to happen here. We have about 15% of the people, the 450,000 or so folks who call the city home today, that are over 60 years old. In the next five years, that number is going to increase to 90,000 people are going to be older than 60. And so if we invited all the people who are just in the next five years are going to be turning 60 years old to a concert, wouldn't it be nice if we could all go to a concert at the amphitheater? That amphitheater would be running out of room by 20% just in the next five years. My concern for us, if we don't go forward this project at Virginia Beach, is that is what's going to happen to the families in Virginia Beach if we don't let expansions like the one Westminster is proposing to go forward. We're going to run out of room for the people who want to stay and call this place home. There's a saying in not-for-profit circles that you'd hear a lot, if any of y'all are on those boards, you may have heard this before, "No margin is no mission." And Westminster's done a good job. Ben and others have pointed out some of those ways that they have done a wonderful balancing act of making it affordable for folks and making it appealing at the same time. That's not easy. I think you have more than just a mission consideration on your hands this evening in regards to your vote in that, just in the last five years, the people who moved from outside the city limits into Virginia Beach and into Westminster Canterbury brought about $250 million of direct economic impact through their investments. And every year, they're bringing at least another quarter million dollars of additional economic impact just by choosing that beautiful community to be their home. If we were to vote yes for this, this expansion, as it's currently...
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
Next speaker is Catherine Bernstein. And after Ms. Bernstein is Sandra Parker. And after Ms. Bernstein is Sandra Parker.
Hello. My name's Katherine, and I live directly, my family and I live directly behind Westminster Canterbury's proposed healthcare building. I just want to tell you some of the concerns that we discussed as a family and why we're here in support. In the last few years, Westminster Canterbury has done some construction on their site that we've lived through, and we've been pleasantly surprised at how well it went. Construction workers were considerate of our traffic flow, they held to common hours of construction, nothing was done too early or too late, and we were invited to ask questions and to voice our concerns. My calls to their place were always returned, I always had my questions answered, and I never felt like my concerns fell on deaf ears. And that's really important with a neighbor. Communication from and with Westminster Canterbury was exceptional, and this expansion has been no different. We feel informed, listened to, and our thoughts considered. We actually feel like we have a voice in this big construction. Westminster Canterbury is also a good steward of their land. One has to appreciate the aesthetic, well-manicured and monitored grounds. We feel safe in our shared neighborhood, and they play a big role in that with well-laid streets, sidewalks, and security always around. That detail is carried through to this new proposal and impressed us a great deal. It's beautiful and it's well-planned, and we, we benefit from that. Now, we do know in time we are going to lose our view. However, we are happy that it's Westminster Canterbury that's there. They will continue to be our neighbors and share in our community. We have truly enjoyed these neighbors, we participate in their community functions, and we go to their outreaches. If you haven't done that, you need to do it because it's a great family-friendly time and it brings people together. Our beach is still going to be our lovely beach, and our access to that beach is going to be bigger and cleaner. I think the architects did a really good job. We've been impressed as we discussed this as a family at our dinner table. It's beautiful, and again, we benefit from that. I'm going to close by sharing that with you, that dementia has taken my great-grandmother, it took my grandmother, and it's now my mother's in its grasp. And I walked a very, very difficult journey with them. And I can tell you, senior living is a huge concern, especially if you need memory care. And memory care is part of this proposed expansion. Not all care facilities are the same, folks. We need facilities like Westminster Canterbury. We want our loved ones. We want ourselves, for that matter, to be cared for when we can't do it ourselves. We need to do this for our seniors. We need to do it and continue to build community. And we need to not be afraid to share our beautiful beach. I will continue to welcome my neighbors, and I hope you will do so as well. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Sandra Parker. And after Ms. Parker is Valerie Proctor-Green.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to speak with you. I'm Sandra Parker. I'm born and raised in Virginia Beach, grew up in Lynnhaven Colony, right off of Shore Drive, across the street from Westminster Canterbury. Actually watched it being built. I had my very first job, official job, as a server in the dining room at Westminster Canterbury. That's when I saw firsthand how a life-plan community concept worked, and I loved everything about it. Now, during my more than two decades of working in television news here in Hampton Roads, I've seen the needs of seniors in our community continue to grow. The shortage of senior housing, it's definitely a concern. That Silver Tsunami, as it is called and has been referred to in studies, that forecasts an increase in the senior population by nearly 50% in the next 10 years, well, I have to be honest, it hits a little close to home. I'm going to be part of that growing population, and I'm thankful that there are places like Westminster Canterbury and Chesapeake Bay that I can consider when I'm ready to move to a senior-living community. I was lucky enough to host a program last year through the Virginia Beach City Television Channel, and it was called Senior Source. On that show, we talked about all that our city has to offer, specifically for our seniors, so many wonderful activities and opportunities. And as you know, more than 25% of the population in Virginia Beach is made up of seniors, 55 years of age and older. They include lifelong Virginia Beach residents, recently-transplanted retirees, and many others. Virginia Beach is a thriving community for seniors, where they can live their best lives by staying active, engaged, and social. As we age, taking care of a house, well, it isn't necessarily what everyone wants to spend their precious time doing. That's why the availability of senior-living communities like Westminster Canterbury is so important. A study, as Ben Uncle mentioned, by Plant Moran lists Virginia Beach as one of the top three metropolitan areas in the nation with the greatest unmet future need for senior living. We have an opportunity right now to help change that. Why create a city with so many wonderful opportunities for our older residents to enjoy but not have enough senior housing available for them to be able to live here? I ask that you please vote yes on the expansion of Westminster Canterbury on Chesapeake Bay. Let's be the city that meets the needs of our growing senior population. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Valerie Proctor-Green. And after Ms. Green is Hoy Duff. Mr. Valerie Proctor-Green. And after Mr. Duff. And after Mr. Duff will be Burl Saunders.
Welcome, Hoy, how you doing?
Doing great, thank you, and good evening. I have lived in Lynnhaven Colony for 40 years, and I have been associated with Lynnhaven Fishing Pier, which is the business that sold the property to Westminster Canterbury, since the second date with my wife in October 1971. And I've worked there off and on ever since then, until we sold it in 2017. I've also owned and operated two other businesses in the neighborhood. My children live in the neighborhood. I've not always been happy with things that have been built and developed in the neighborhood, but things seem to work out just fine. I know that my father-in-law, who originally was one of the people that built the pier, told us that when we knew that it was time to sell, that we would know when to sell. And one of the reasons that we sold to Westminster Canterbury was because of the kind of people that ran it and what they did. And we felt comfortable with that. I've looked at their development plans, and I'm not an engineer and architect or an urban planner, but I don't really see anything wrong with it. It was, it's, it's less than what I would do if I were in charge of it. And I've also listened to the objections of the other people in the community for it and really can't find any sense in what they complained about. But that's pretty typical of the neighborhood in the 40 years that I've been involved in the Civic League and things like that. That's just the way these things go. But I and my wife and my family support what Westminster Canterbury is doing on that property. I know my father-in-law would feel honored by what they're doing. And so, you know, we would feel comfortable with you granting their requests. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Burl Saunders. And after Mr. Saunders is Ron Ripley.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. I've lived on the Chesapeake Bay for 35 years and watched it change. It's been quite a growth period, and I think it's a really special place for us all here in Virginia Beach. And many of our citizens come to our area to enjoy it. But one special citizen we have on the Chesapeake Bay has been Westminster Canterbury. And from the day one of starting of that facility, they have been a great neighbor, and they have done what they said they were going to do, and they've done it well. We're blessed to have such an organization in our city, and I've had the opportunity to review their plans, and I can tell you from my standpoint as an architect, they are second to none in Hampton Roads. This is an amazing facility, amazing organization, and I encourage you to vote positive for it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ron, Mr. Ron Ripley. And then after Mr. Ripley is Henry Jarrett III.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. How are you tonight?
Doing good, thank you.
Just terrific, and welcome, and I also recognize the city council, good to be here. My name is Ron Ripley. I live at 4101 White Acres Road in Virginia Beach. I'm also a trustee on the Westminster Canterbury Board. I first want to thank you for the honor of serving on your planning commission for many years. I haven't publicly done that, and I would like to do that. My term ended in December, and it was a terrific experience. I'm going to really talk about land use, talk about the height of the building a little bit, and hopefully add some information to you that'll help you make a decision. But during my eight years on the, first, when I first went on the planning commission, I served eight years on the Shore Drive Advisory Committee. And there, we developed all the, all the plans that you're working with right now, so I have a little, little understanding about that. Shore Drive is just a wonderful place. It's, has a wide range of residential housing, ranging from single-family to low-rise to mid-rise to high-rise construction. The, the housing mix provides a really interesting, to me, a real interesting skyline, a residential skyline, from both the ground and out off the water. So it's, it's just a very unique place. But I would like for you to focus on the three areas on, in that district that are, where high-rise construction is appropriate. You have, you have an area right at the Lesnar Bridge where it's clustered with high-rise, some as much as 16, 17 stories in height. You have the Westminster Canterbury node, and you have the Seagate Colony node. All these areas are appropriately populated with, with high density. As a practical matter, it's really kind of hard to tell the, the height of one of these buildings as you ride down there, how tall they are. It's very difficult. You just, it's part of the, the high-rise structures are really just an important part of the fabric of this community, of this resort residential community. I believe that the proposed use contain, within, is, since it's contained within a high-density node, is, is appropriate. And this is a, this is a, you've heard it said earlier, this is really a natural extension of the current use. There's been a lot of discussions about the 22 stories in height for the Independence Build, Independence Living Building, but this building will be spectacular, as Burl pointed out, and Burl is, is an exceptional architect. The quality will exceed anything that we have in this area of the city. A few additional stories above the existing buildings that are in that area already.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Henry Jarrett III, and then Donna Overstreet.
Good evening. I hate that little bell, so I'm going to go to the end first and then to the regular My father and mother were residents of Westminster Canterbury for almost 25 years. I have had occasion to visit and be involved with numerous senior communities in Virginia Beach, and I can say without exception that Westminster Canterbury is hands-down the best facility I've ever been involved with. Please vote in favor of the expansion proposal so that Virginia Beach has enough senior housing for people like my dad in the years and decades to come. My family has a long history with Westminster Canterbury. My parents were one of the first residents of the West Tower apartment building when it opened in 2002. They chose to live in Chesapeake Bay campus because they wanted to be near family, and my grandparents had had such a positive experience with Westminster Canterbury and Richmond. They also wanted care for life and did not want to be a burden on my wife and I, although I don't think that's possible. My parents were married for 64 years. My mother was diagnosed with dementia and had to be moved into the Chesapeake for additional care that my father couldn't provide about five years ago. He cared for her in the Ches, the care for her in the Chesapeake was outstanding. My mother passed on November of 2018. If my dad had lived, was living alone in a house or apartment building, he would not have had the support and care he needed from the staff at Westminster Canterbury and those who live with him on the campus. While my wife and I visited with my parents often before and after they moved to Westminster Canterbury, we could not be with him all of the time. Surviving the death of a spouse is not easy, almost impossible. At Westminster Canterbury, they helped him through it, through those trying times. I think the results speak for themselves. My dad's 95 years old. He hasn't just lived, he's thriving. My dad was a sergeant in the First Armored Division in the U.S. Army in the mid-1940s in Italy. I think being around other veterans is something he enjoys. I know that Westminster values our veterans. The employees, from the CEO down to the first-job teens on the waiting staff, are always respectful and appreciative of those who have served our nation. They realize our country is the home of the free because of the brave. Connectivity from my parents and especially from my dad, once my mother passed, has been vital. There are so many ways at Westminster Canterbury to meet people. The friendships he made over a quarter of a century, especially with the staff, have made his life richer. Between the three dining venues and having people around him that feel like family, many of whom are family, have prevented, prevented social isolation and loneliness, both of which would have been devastating to his health and his emotional well-being. I believe this connectivity has allowed him to thrive and has added quality to the years of his life, and as son, I could never ask for anything more. Please vote for this.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next speaker is Donna Overstreet. And after Ms. Overstreet is David Dillard.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and city council members. My name is Donna Overstreet. I have lived in Virginia Beach for over a decade, and I am president of Security Storage and Van Company, a full-service moving and storage company, serving families and businesses since 1914. As an executive in the moving and storage industry, my work on the non-commercial side of our business is predominantly with baby boomers who are looking to downsize. Many are looking to move senior-living communities like Westminster Canterbury, where housing, healthcare, and other amenities are provided to them all on one campus. I see so many families that they put them in a retirement facility, and then they need extra care, and then they have to go to another facility, and then they have memory, and then they have to move them to another facility. This is such an ideal situation that they can stay in one facility and not have to worry with the confusion of moving from one place to another. Studies have shown that we are going to have a Silver Tsunami in Virginia Beach and nationwide because of all the baby boomers retiring. I've already started to see this in the work I do for my company. I am told that the senior population is projected to increase by almost 50% in the next decade. Many of the seniors who have called Virginia Beach home for years want to retire here. And why wouldn't they? It is a great place to live, and for many of them, it means being near their families. However, here in Virginia Beach, we do not have enough senior housing to meet the growth and demand. In fact, our city has been cited in the media as one of the top three metropolitan areas in the U.S. with the greatest future unmet need for senior housing, and we already have a shortage now. While Westminster campus has grown over the past two decades, it still cannot keep up with the demand to serve residents of Virginia Beach and the greater Hampton Roads community. They have a waitlist of about 500 families who have given a deposit to secure a place in the community. Many are from Virginia Beach. Westminster's expansion plan helps address the city's demand for city housing, and it will accomplish with no tax dollars needed. That is a win-win in my book. The expansion of Westminster Canterbury will increase jobs in Virginia Beach, but will also increase business with local vendors who provide services or goods. I see that as a win-win also. Let me end by saying I think this project is a wonderful opportunity for the city to get ahead of this housing problem, and to do it with a responsible nonprofit organization that has been a good member of our community for nearly 40 years. Please vote yes on the expansion.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is David Dillard. And after Mr. Dillard is Cal Kazir. The next speaker is David Dillard, and after Mr. Dillard is Cal Casier.
Good evening, thanks for having me. I'm Mr. Mayor, honorable council members, David Dillard, with D2 Architecture. I've been asked to address two topics in particular that have captured the attention of both sides of the room, I believe. One is related to wind, and the other is to reflectance, both pertaining to the exterior skin of the building and its impact or absence thereof on its neighbors. Wind question number one has been, will the new building deflect and generate higher winds to the detriment of its neighbors? And rather than speculate, Westminster Canterbury commissioned a report from CPP Wind Consultants, a group of scientists out of Denver, to, to prepare a wind study on the a priori effects of wind altered by architecture. They do this around the world, from New York, Miami, Singapore, and far beyond. With data collected from the Norfolk Airport, they learned that the prevalent winds on the site are from the southwest, and the strongest winds are from the northeast. Combining this data with the, an exact computer-generated model of our proposed building, CPP drew the following very important conclusion, and I quote, "The accelerated surface winds are not expected to impact the existing ocean shore residences." Period. The CPP report further indicates that the new building will in fact actually shield the ocean shore residences for the better part of the year. Wind question number two, will residents be safe in a category four or five hurricane? And the answer to that in a word is yes. Built-to-last codes and standards for a twenty-two-story building, the safety features are impressive, not only in resistance to shattered glass, but in design of its core, within which will run two, a minimum of two elevators under emergency power operated by firefighters and first responders in a scenario of evacuation. More importantly, and perhaps more relevant, all residents will have the capacity to retreat to designated safe areas, which is called sheltering-in-place, throughout the worst of such a storm. For the curtain wall and glazing system, D2 has hired CDC Curtain Wall Design Consultants. They likewise have an international reputation far beyond our own success with them around the country. Obviously, much of their work is coastal, much in up, up and down the Atlantic coast. Among other things, their specifications will include laminated glass, which, like your windshield, is designed to remain virtually intact even under the most severe conditions. On the reflectance topic, quickly, we have specified for both buildings a Guardian product called Sun Guard SNX-5123. Friends can Google that, Guardian product called Sun Guard SNX-5123. And its blue-green option, which we think we're going to take, generates reflectance of eleven percent. Famous cases of neighborly nuisances around the country come from reflectance of forty percent or more. Some cities are considering limitations to twenty percent or more. We will be roughly half of that. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Cal Casier, and after Mr. Casier is Linwood Branch.
Good evening, sir. My name is Cal Casier. I'm a thirty-eight-year resident of Bay Island, one of the many communities in the Bayfront. I'm also the former owner of two businesses located on Shore Drive, a few short, few short blocks from Westminster Canterbury, and I'm speaking in support of their application for expansion. Quality senior residential development is not only needed due to the increase of senior population and emergent demographic, but compatible, in my opinion, to the residential resort community nature of the Bayfront as outlined in the Urban Land Institute study commissioned by the city back in nineteen ninety-seven. I attended two lengthy presentations by the applicant and their representative, and commend them for voluntarily undertaking design changes to improve the site plan among others, among others, and for reaching out to their neighbors and the community. Parking and traffic congestions are usually the primary concerns of any new development in the Bayfront, and I believe this project has addressed those concerns satisfactorily. Westminster Canterbury is a major stakeholder in the corridor, and a good corporate citizen, as they have demonstrated over four decades, and I can personally attest to that. I can also attest to its positive economic impact, especially on the many small mom-and-pop businesses in the Bayfront, such as hairdressing salons, dry cleaners, and restaurants. This is one of the largest major private financial investments in the Bayfront, if not the entire city. With far more benefits, though, are residents in the city of Virginia Beach. I urge you to approve their application. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
The next speaker is Linwood Branch, after Mr. Branch is Terry Jenkins.
Welcome.
Honorable Member of Mayors of Council, Members of Council, my name is Linwood Branch, and I speak in favor of this application. I have personal experiences with Westminster Canterbury involving two treasured family members, which I would like to share with you. Aunt Thelma was one of my favorite all-time people, who became a Westminster resident in the nineteen eighties after the passing of her husband. She was a passionate birdwatcher and traveled the world, enjoying this pastime, using Westminster as her home base. She lived there for twenty-six years, and up until her last day, lived the life she wanted. What a comfort it was to know that my wonderful aunt was in a safe place and having such enjoyment during her sunset years. She was such a fan of Westminster that she helped convince her sister, my grandmother, to move there. My grandmother had lived at home alone, and after an incident where she fell, it became apparent that a change was necessary. At age ninety, she didn't want to leave her home, but after a great deal of coercing, she moved to Westminster. We knew we'd done the right thing when, a few months after her arrival, she said, "If I'd have known how nice it was here, I'd have moved in when I was eighty." She started out in independent living and at age one hundred relocated to the assisted living section. She enjoyed the programs and friendships she developed until the age of one hundred and eleven. The peace of mind my dad and his brother enjoyed, knowing their mother was in a nurturing environment, was immeasurable. The folks who run Westminster are caring and professional. The food is good, the facility is immaculate, and the programs and services are exemplary. Westminster took early action by restricting access due to the COVID issue, sparing that facility from some of the nightmare story, stories of other facilities. Management is smart and caring. As the baby boomer generation ages, quality senior care facilities providing good choices for families making difficult decisions are a godsend. Westminster Canterbury is by far the best facility of its type I've seen, and I would highly recommend it to anyone wanting the best environment for a loved one. Virginia Beach is fortunate to have this facility, and I encourage you to support its expansion and provide a quality option for even more of our senior citizens in the future. Your affirmative vote tonight can make that happen. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Terry Jenkins is the next speaker. Then after Ms. Jenkins is John Barati.
Welcome, Terry.
Good evening, Mayor, and Members of Council. My name is Terry Jenkins, and I live in the condos that are owned by Westminster Canterbury, located just west of what was formerly known as the Lynn Haven Fish House. I've lived there for four years, and I strongly support this project. Here's why. Before my retirement as the Director of Human Services for the city of Virginia Beach, I saw many sad situations involving older people who had not adequately planned for their later years. And then, when an unexpected health crisis arose, often a less-than-satisfactory plan was hastily put in place under conditions of high stress. As our population continues to age, we must assure that we have adequate retirement living options to meet the need, especially for older adults who have no family support in the area, like me. As a life care community, Westminster Canterbury offers the highest quality of life, made possible by a highly professional and caring Board of Directors and staff. The proposed expansion will allow many more older people to experience the security of knowing they have planned well and won't be a burden on their families or on their community. I hope you will endorse the project. I thank you for the opportunity to talk with you, and I thank you for all that you do for our city.
Thank you very much.
John Barati. And after Mr. Barati is Ginny Lauer.
Welcome. Mr. Mayor, honorable council, my name is John Barati, and I represent the construction firm of Whiting Turner. We are a large national firm from coast to coast specializing in this type of work. I moved here in oh six and opened up the office in Hampton Roads. I have three kids who've gone through the school system and a wife/teacher at Landstown, teaching math, virtually. Different discussion. We've been working with Westminster Canterbury for about five years, and I think Ms. Bernstein sung our praises about being almost invisible while under construction. My role in this project is to ensure the safety of all the workers, of the community, the cleanliness of the area around the construction and inside the construction fence, and frankly, Westminster Canterbury would expect nothing less. So, these are the things that are certainly important to the community, and we certainly support working with Westminster Canterbury on this job and hope it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Ginny Lauer, and after Ms. Lauer is Paul Turcottal.
Welcome.
Good evening. My understanding is that I'm allotted ten minutes on behalf of Ocean Shores Condominium Association, I'm their council.
That is, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. In nineteen ninety-seven, this body had to determine whether or not it was appropriate to erect a tower in a residential area in Virginia Beach. Much consternation followed, and since the situations are so parallel, I'd like to read you a portion of the court's decision because it did get litigated, substituting only the name Westminster Canterbury for the entity that wanted to build at that time. The court noted, "Westminster Canterbury correctly points out that both the Virginia Beach Planning Department and the Virginia Beach Planning Commission recommended approval. In addition, Westminster Canterbury, of course, had numerous experts touting both the necessity and the minimal impact of the tower." Yes, the word "tower" was really in the original. "But the repeated and widespread opposition of a majority of the citizens of Virginia Beach who voiced their views at the planning commission hearing, through petitions, through letters, and at the Virginia Beach City Council meeting amounts to far more than a mere scintilla of evidence to persuade a reasonable mind to oppose the application. Indeed, we should wonder at a legislator who ignored such opposition. In all cases of this sort, those seeking to build will come armed with exhibits, experts, and evaluations. Westminster Canterbury, by urging us to hold that such a predictable barrage mandates that local government approve applications, effectively demands that we interpret the law, so as always to thwart average, non-expert citizens, that is, to thwart our democracy." It's easy to see, in that case, the council made the right decision. They didn't let the tower go through, and they were applauded for that, as well as commended by the court. It was the proper application of democracy. There needs to be some honesty in this process, and there needs to be some recognition of what does and doesn't actually fit the needs of the city of Virginia Beach, and more importantly, what are the legal ramifications of that? I think they're more important because I'm a lawyer. We've heard numerous people on behalf of Westminster Canterbury tell us that this is an underserved community. That's not a surprise. We are told that nearly every place in the United States is underserved when it comes to senior housing, and I don't doubt it. But what they're referring to, as to these three jurisdictions, McAllen, Texas, Augusta, Georgia, and Virginia Beach, Virginia, I decided to go to the source since they were quoted so frequently, and actually, that's a survey from Plant Moran, we're not talking about NBC News here, telling us that those are the three areas where you can make the most money developing senior housing. That's what it really says. It's not about being underserved globally. This is a survey that everyone keeps citing because it says Virginia Beach is one of the three places you should develop senior housing because you stand to make a lot of money by doing it there. As to the issue of endorsement, you have a senior housing advisory committee that has been thrown aside in this case. It's part of your planning commission, and they have been routinely ignored. In every other development that you have done involving senior housing, or housing for the disabled, you have sought the recommendation of that body. If you look at your planning commission report, which remains the same as it was at the planning commission hearing, it says only that Senior Housing Advisory Commission found that there was a need for more expensive housing for seniors. They didn't actually say that. I have the November nineteenth, two thousand and nineteen minutes of their meeting. I urge you to go back and look at them. I was told early on you should always check the source, not just the people who are quoting it, and in this case, that proved to be true. They haven't endorsed this project. I don't know why Mr. Nutter keeps saying that they do, but everything that I have tells me that their position is very critical of the lack of affordable housing. So let's talk about that. Westminster Canterbury may be a fine institution. I don't know, I don't have any personal experience with them. But I do know that while they tout their ability to provide subsidies, financial assistance, they wouldn't provide any of that information to your senior housing advisory committee. They wouldn't say what the number was that was subsidized, they wouldn't give them dollar amounts, how much things cost, what it was. So I decided to go to the Virginia SCC reports about Westminster Canterbury and found out that the application that they have on file shows that the only financial assistance they provide is provided at an eight percent interest rate. Everything in the way of financial assistance is considered alone. I don't know about you, but that doesn't sound terribly affordable. We do know that based on their filings for their current places, that in addition to the deposit which runs somewhere between seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars and a million dollars for each apartment, that you have to have one and a half times the amount of your monthly assistance, your rent, in order to be able to continue to live there. I asked the CPA, and he told me basically what you have to have is two million dollars in interest-earning assets in order to be able to stay there. I don't know if that really fits what Virginia Beach needs. But my primary concern in all of this has been the manner in which they've asserted that they have a right to build a tower twenty-two stories high, adjacent to a number of clients that I represent. I've written you a letter that I considered over a long period of time and that I think lays out particularly well what the arguments are. But I would cite to you some of the other provisions in your Code of Ordinances that require a finding that you don't have the authority to allow them to build a twenty-two-story Beginning with action by the city council, and this is found in Section 221. "In addition to the general or specific requirements set forth in this ordinance concerning the proposed use, which shall be considered minimum requirements with respect to the permit, everything about this application requires you to look back at Section 901. And 901 says a hundred and sixty-five feet." Now, I know Mr. Nutter, and perhaps even the city attorney, think that there's a potential that you can obtain a larger building because you have general discretion under Section 221I. What 221I tells you is that "the city council may, for good cause shown and upon a finding that there will be no significant detrimental effects on surrounding properties, allow reasonable deviations from the following requirements." Those include height regulations. This is not a height regulation. Your planning commission report tells you that. There is no height regulation in a B4 district, there is a use regulation, and that use regulation says no structures shall be permitted that are in violation of the use. Did a prior city council make a mistake when it enacted that statute? Because I know that it's been pointed out that a hundred and sixty-five feet isn't a limitation in any of the other provisions for senior or disabled housing. So did we just kind of mess up somewhere? I don't think so. When you enacted the nineteen ninety-eight code, June twenty-third of nineteen ninety-eight, you also amended the statute for 901, 401, 501. You amended- You amended all of the districts, agricultural, business, office, everything that would permit a building like that to be built, and you didn't change anything about any of them, other than the wording, except you maintained the 165-feet restriction. You got rid of the density requirement in 901. So at the same time, you were doing all of these things. You knew, as city council and as a body, exactly what it was before you, and you recognized the need to limit the height in a B4 district to 165 feet, and that's what people have come in believing. The individuals who surround Westminster Canterbury have rights as well. They have bought in under a zoning plan. They have bought in under the law. And to permit anything to be built in excess of that is an anathema. It violates the rules, and it's not the way that we should be playing the game. I would also point you to, even if you determine that there is an exception that can be created under 221i, and again, I don't believe it's true. It says that it is the affirmative obligation of this body to establish that there are no significant detrimental effects to any of the surrounding properties. You have a shadow study that's not really a shadow study. It tells you that the worst times in your planning report, which again has been fairly selective, is October and February at 4:00 p.m. But it just says that's when it's the worst, and it's not as bad as any other times. I don't know about you, but really bad and then really, really bad are still bad. They're negative consequences, and those are the consequences to be suffered by the people who adjoin that property. It doesn't look anything like it's supposed to, but I'm going to leave the bulk of those arguments to the architects and the other individuals who have a more specific opinion about why this isn't useful. You saw the article this morning, I know you did, in the paper. Somebody actually moved because of the fear of what it would be. Years of building, pile driving, and all these people who live adjacent to this property have a right to object. They have a right not to suffer through where they have retired to, where they have come to live.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Mr. Moss.
Could you just cite the court case citation that you hypothetically inserted another name for? Can you give us the actual court case that you're citing?
It is a Fourth Circuit case, and I'd be happy to go and grab that. That's not on the paperwork that I have in front of me, but I will toss, hand it up in a piece of paper to the clerk.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Paul Turkotod. And then after Mr. Turkotod, I'm sorry if I'm messing your name up.
Oh, no, you're fine.
Will be Gerald Sandler.
Good evening. Let me make it clear that I don't believe anyone here is totally opposed to Westminster Canterbury's expansion. What we are opposed to is the way that this has been done. If Westminster Canterbury were truly a good neighbor, as they've alluded to tonight, Ben Uncle, the CEO of Westminster Canterbury, Mark Borst, the VP of Development, and RJ Nutter, the attorney for Westminster Canterbury, would have reached out to the community before these plans were so far along. If they did, we would not be in the position that we are tonight on such opposite sides. I heard just now tonight a lot of new information. I did not realize this started five years ago. We were not brought into this picture until December 17th of 2019. Since then, we've been asking for many of these studies that were brought up tonight. We've been asking for a wind study that I'm hearing CPT wind consultants did. Unfortunately, that's so new that it's not even on Westminster Canterbury's website. We were asking for a solar study. Once again, the CDC consultants did that, not on the website because it is so new. We asked for a shadow study, and on the shadow study, there are pictures on the website. There are no words that go along with it. It just shows 24 different pictures of shadows. That is not what a shadow study is. We've asked since the beginning of this project that we found out about it in 2019 for a traffic study. RJ Nutter loves to point out that he'll wave in his hand a traffic study that's 19 pages long. The problem with that is that study was done in November of 2019, and since then, city council in a two-mile radius of Westminster Canterbury has approved 1,011 condominiums or apartment buildings, and a lot of those have not been built yet, and a lot of them are not filled yet. How can we do a traffic study that doesn't take those things into consideration? Also, the parking is an issue. Between the assisted living, the nursing home, the independent care, they're putting in 340 units. They're only allowing 385 spaces. This is going to be for all of the residents, this is going to be for all of the new employees, and this is also going to be for all of the guests that come. I will defy Ben Uncle that that is enough parking, even though that's what the city requires according to RJ Nutter. I don't believe it's enough. The parking is broken now. They park on our streets in the community and walk over to the property. We can show you that every day. As this continues, this will absolutely get worse. If Mr. Uncle really believes that this is the perfect number, then I would like him to put in writing tonight up here in front of city council that no member will move in or no resident will move in with more than one car, because that's what he has assured us verbally, and I just don't believe that because most couples that are in their 60s, 70s, 80s, and even their 90s now, both of them are driving. You know, Ben Uncle loves to say that they have 500 people on their waiting list that are ready to move into Westminster Canterbury. All of this was done pre-COVID. If you read any of the current literature of long-term care in this country, everybody is thinking smaller. Everybody is thinking of how do I stay home? Everybody is thinking of the smallest facility that they can possibly get into. Westminster Canterbury has virtually created Guantanamo Bay in Virginia Beach. The people have been locked in this facility since March of this year. Can you imagine not getting out of your house since March? That is the case there. Can you imagine not seeing your relatives? I don't know how many of you have gone through Westminster Canterbury or driven by, but the way that they are seeing their relatives now is through a fence. There's a park bench on one side, a park bench on the other side, and the people have to talk through the fence because that is the way they're communicating. This is not being a good neighbor. If they were good neighbors, we're talking about a $410 million expansion here. Why don't they buy four or five office trucks, set them up in their parking lot, and put Plexiglas to separate them and let the families visit in the comfort of air conditioning instead of in the summer they've been out there in 90 and 100-degree heat? We're going to be coming in the winter very soon. Mark Borst did the other night at the meeting, also, we've asked for the last nine months, how are they going to do these pilings that were addressed before? You've only got two ways of doing pilings. You hammer them into the ground constantly, and do I want to hear this for 90 days, every day, eight hours a day while they're doing it? Or you do a bore-and-pour, where you bore a hole into the ground, pour the concrete in. We've heard nothing about that, and Mark Borst constantly says, "Well, we haven't made our decision yet on that." I don't believe that five years into a project, they have not made the decision. So in closing, I'm going to say to the council, verify everything you're hearing tonight. Verify what I've said to you. Verify what Westminster Canterbury is saying to you, because you've got to make sure that you are getting the facts, because I've seen too many things that they're not transparent on, that have not been represented correctly, and that are not being represented correctly. The one final thing that I would say in closing, or two final things rather, is, one, I would love you to send our good neighbors back to the drawing board with members of the community so that we can help design this together and talk about the appropriate way that this building can be designed to benefit their people and to benefit the community. There's no reason they should not coexist. And then finally, I tell you, I have not been pleased with the lack of response that I've gotten when I've written to the city council on certain things. And there is one individual that I want to call out tonight, Mr. Tower. And is he here? Mr. Tower. You know, one thing that we filed under FOIA and got the information of the correspondence back and forth between Westminster Canterbury, and we found out in that correspondence that all of the emails that we sent to you from the community that were opposed to the expansion of Westminster Canterbury were sent by you to RJ Nutter. Is that correct? Absolutely not, because that's what's showing up on the FOIA reports. So how do we go back and make sure that that's accurate? I don't have time to argue that with you now, but what I would like is the mayor to look into that, and if that is the case, that that transaction is true of what we found out in the FOIA reports, then I would suggest that we look at asking Mr. Tower to recuse himself from the voting process of this, because it's not appropriate to speak to the attorney in that matter. Thank you very much for your time.
It's absolutely not true. I can assure you that. I don't know where that information is coming from. I sent one email to Mr. Nutter.
Pardon me?
I sent one email.
So we're now up to one. You said before you didn't send it. I would like to go through the records.
Sir, with due respect, you're talking about...
And all I'm asking, Mayor, I didn't say I wanted to argue it. I would just like you, as the mayor, to look into that. Thank you for your time.
Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, Mr. Moss.
Do we have a break in speakers? I think the clerk got that citation. It would be nice if Mr. styled the city attorney while other people are speaking. Maybe they can find a way to print off that ruling, because I'd like to be able to read that before we vote.
The next speaker is Gerald Sandler. And after Mr. Sandler is Lisa Ledig.
Been very exciting for me. I don't know about you. But my name is Jerry Sandler. I was the Director of Guidance in Princess Anne, Kinsville, and Bayside. I was in education here for 32 years. I love this city. I live on Silver Sands Circle, which is about maybe two blocks away from Westminster at this time. So I do know the area. I'm here as a representative for Lester Point condo association. They have asked me to come in here to speak or deny a request for this application. I have already passed on to you what I'm going to speak about. On behalf of Lester Point on Chesapeake Bay, we formally request that the city councils deny the subject request from Westminster Canterbury on Chesapeake Bay for a modification of the conditions to build a four-story parking garage, a 22-story senior living facility, a seven-story memory unit facility connected by an enclosed elevated pedestrian bridges over a roadway. I've heard a lot of people talk prior to this, but I could not hear them say anything about safety. These seniors are not thought of as people who will be safe in a 22-story building. Lester Point condo association is a 25-year-old, 96-unit residential condominium. The homeowners association along the Shore Drive corridor. At our July executive board meeting, they unanimously voted on the following motion regarding the current proposed WCCB development. Quote, "The Lester Point condominium on Chesapeake Bay opposes the Westminster Canterbury expansion proposal, and this is in violation of the Shore Drive overlay because of its density restrictions and the Business 901 height restriction. The proposed project, defined as housing for seniors, violates the following city codes." Let's try and keep in mind, why do we have codes? Shore Drive corridor overlay section 1704, which goes into density requirements of the maximum 24 units per acre, the proposed 22-story tower lot size is only 2.56 acres. As you may see on the chart I gave you, I won't go through all those statistics, but the one at the bottom is the most important. A proposed 22-story will be 255% above code. That was the 217 units that were brought up earlier. As was spoken earlier, was the business district section 901, senior housing building height restriction of 165 feet. The 22-tower has a height of 250 feet. This code requirement appears to have been created, obviously, to allow safe evacuation of elderly residents in case of an emergency. Yes, safety, that's the most important thing about this project that is not working. The LPCA understands the council will be using city code section 235, housing for seniors and disabled persons, to approve random densities for these types of projects. However, this code also requires council to evaluate the project with the following guidelines. The mass or overall size and height of the structure should be appropriate to the surroundings. Based on the numbers alone, it seems the proposed 22-story tower fails on heights and mass. The LPCA is also concerned that the project will set a harmful precedent for the future development requests of high-density, taller tower structures in Business B2 and B4. This is incompatible with the surrounding residential and lower-density multifamily dwellings that make the Shore Drive corridor unique. There is no one I know at Lester Point that thinks it's not important to have senior living places. We need more, no doubt. But we do want to take care of the safety of these people who are living there. That's why we have city codes. Let's not walk around it. Let's look at it. Thank you for your consideration, and please, deny this subject. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Lisa Ledig. And then the next speaker will be Tom Forrest.
Mr. Mayor, before the speaker speaks, I think the clerk and I need some direction. Several of these speakers you've signed up as representing condo associations or civic leagues. Your policy says that opponents of an application shall be allowed three minutes each. In the event the opponents are represented by an attorney, engineer, or other professional whose profession, as a customary part thereof, includes appearing before a governmental body, shall get 10. That was the case for Ms. Lauer, and 10 minutes was permitted. The rule also says that the presiding officer, with the consent of the city council, may extend or reduce the time limits. So the clerk and I inquire as to whether or not these speakers representing homeowners' associations should be given three or 10 minutes. And that's a decision for you, subject to the consent of the body.
Okay. You know, with due respect, I think we gave, you know, the people presenting just the 10 minutes up front, and then everybody else was three minutes after that. If we can have, and once again, we had the attorney for the opposition, so given the number and volume and fairness to everybody, if we can go for three minutes from now? Would that, you know...
That is what the policy requires unless you change it with the consent of the body.
Okay. Are we okay to do three minutes? Mr. Moss?
I don't have any issue in this instance, but then we need to make it clear, because here's my concern, and this... In this case, each condo could be representing three-hundred people, two-hundred people, and they are a distinct organization, which might have different perspectives on the issue. We just need to make sure that our policy in the future, I'm supporting you, Mr. Mayor, but we need to make it clear that the parties need to get together and decide who's going to be their ten-minute speaker. Because that is somewhat ambiguous, and they are different vested property parcels.
Yeah, I think the intent of that was, you know, one person would represent a number of people, but here with the amount of, what do you have, about fifty speakers today, thereabouts?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so it was just the mayor, fairness, that, you know, we did give, you know, the CEO of Westminster Canterbury ten minutes, and we gave the opposing council ten minutes. So if we can keep it to three minutes, and, you know, but please, you know, we're here to listen to you. Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Liedig, and I am here representing Lynn Shore Condominiums. It's a twenty-four-unit HOA on Starfish Road. And we oppose this project. Just besides the fact that it's too high, it's too dense. I don't know if y'all actually went in the neighborhood, but this is in the middle of a neighborhood. This is not town center, it's not water side, it's Shore Drive, it's very quiet. I want to speak specifically on beach access. I go to the beach all the time. I am somebody that everybody sees on the beach, they wave to me, you know. And I have spoken to between seventy-five and a hundred families that use this particular beach access that Westminster is requesting to be moved. And I have not had a single person say that they're in favor of moving this away and, in essence, creating a private beach for Westminster, because the distance from west of Ocean Shore Avenue down to Clean Street is about four-tenths of a mile. These families are coming from everywhere, they're driving there, they're crossing Shore Drive, or they live on Starfish or some of the surrounding neighborhoods. This access is owned by the City of Virginia Beach. And they have said that there is absolutely no way that the tide was going to come up and prevent people from going under the pier. We had a storm in May of this year, and then Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and Monday, during periods of high tides, you could not get under the pier unless you wanted to walk through about a foot of water during high tides. That's typically two hours before and two hours after. That is a barrier for anybody to be able to cross to go in front of what is now Casa de Playa and the towers. We just had beach replenishment last year. Is that something that now we're going to do more often so that it is, you are able to get under the pier? I doubt it. Westminster, if you look at these plans, they're leaving the stairwell from the bulkhead to the beach. That is creating, from a public beach access, a private beach access. There is a ruling in March of 2020 that a judge said, "Once it's public, you can't make it private, period." Surf Rider Foundation said, these are excerpts from their site, which I've sent to all of you, "Development must not be allowed to interfere with public access." That is exactly what they're doing by closing this access.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I have a lot more, I was told I had ten minutes. If y'all have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you.
Mayor, the next speaker is Tom Forrest, and before Mr. Forrest begins, I will tell you that he came to my office maybe a week or so ago, I'm sorry, I couldn't remember, it all runs together at some point, and indicated that he was going to be representing this group. And we did tell him that he would have ten minutes based on that. At that point, we didn't know Ms. Lauer.
Okay, yeah, well, we'll honor that commitment. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Tom Forrest, I live at 2420 Ocean Shore Crescent, and I'm officially representing the Lynn Haven Colony Civic League, which stretches from the Lester Bridge to the West Great Neck Road. We're all here because the Planning Commission approved Westminster's application for expansion, and the process only allows citizens to correct the record at City Council hearing. I'm going to address the Westminster attorney's responses to the opposition points made at the Planning Commission hearing. The attorney countered the density limitation argument stating, "City Council about twenty years ago amended the density ordinance for senior housing, a buy-use permit." He then indicated that the building height restrictions have differing provisions citing City Codes 222, which is incorrect, we assume he meant 202, 235, and 904, stating, quote, "The city code has some conflicting provisions on the height in this area," and, quote, "There is no height limit for senior housing." He later admitted about Section 901, which we've heard about a lot tonight, limits senior housing a hundred-and-sixty-five feet, or about fourteen stories, the current height of the tallest Westminster structures, and stated, quote, "I have no idea why those sections don't coincide." The attorney did not cite the reference for the buy-use permit City Council amendment or when it was passed. Documentation is vital when it comes to this project of this scope and should be produced. However, the density limitation cited by the opponents repeatedly at the Planning Commission meeting and tonight's hearing is not citywide. It is a Shore Drive Corridor Overlay Section 1704, twenty-four units per acre. Is Section 1704 superseded by the City Council's amendment? Or is Section 1704 intentionally more restrictive along Shore Drive? Regarding his initial comment at the Planning Commission meeting, quote, "There is no height limit for senior housing," that statement taken in itself is completely false, as you've heard this evening. There is a height limit for Section 901, which he later conceded. However, the answer to his concern about the conflicting code could be as simple as this. When city codes were developed, a deliberate decision was made to place a limitation on the height of senior housing and was placed in Section 901. Perhaps it was written because of the inherent risk of trying to evacuate senior or disabled citizens from tall structures. We don't know why 901 exists, but it's in black and white. Here's a partial citation from that section. Quote, "Housing for seniors and disabled persons or handicapped, including convoluted or nursing, maximum height shall not exceed one-hundred-and-sixty-five feet," unquote. The fact that the height limitation in Section 901 exists and doesn't fit the narrative of Westminster's expansion doesn't make it any less valid. In fact, it makes it more relevant. Supplemental regulations at all levels of government aren't typically written for more relaxed rules, they're written with more strict language to address exceptions. The attorney then stated that the Virginia Beach city staff, Westminster administration, and the Bayfront Advisory Commission are, quote, "comfortable with the city, with the height, and that City Council has the ability to set the height to whatever they feel is appropriate." He later concluded by stating, quote, "Nothing has changed from my initial presentation to the Planning Commission. We still have your staff recommendation, the Bayfront Advisory Commission found no concerns, and the Senior Housing Commission all have approved it," end quote, "We are comfortable with this." Regarding the city staff vetting of the expansion, is it possible that the staff was not aware of Section 901 requirement? It's a reasonable question, given that it might be the first time senior housing was proposed to exceed a hundred-and-sixty-five feet because of the number of low-rise senior housing complexes that have been built over the last twenty years. Further, the twenty-four-page staff report recommending approval did not reference Section 901 anywhere, which is a strong indicator that they were not aware of the code. However, if city staff was aware of the 901 code requirement and the recommended approval of Westminster's application, but did not mention that code restriction in the staff report, shouldn't that also raise eyebrows for the City Council? Given that possibility, did the city staff either ignore the code or purposely omit the code from that report when the height restriction was clearly codified in writing? In either case, before approving, shouldn't someone ask the staff why they recommended approval, given the lack of compliance with Section 901, and whether they are still comfortable with the expansion as proposed? Otherwise, we may never know if the staff was cognizant of 901 prior to their approval recommendation. The attorney's comment about the city staff, Westminster administration, and the Bayfront Advisory Commission being, quote, "comfortable" essentially inferred that City Council should ignore the code that is currently in place by approving the height they want. Naturally, the Westminster administration is comfortable with the proposal. It's already common knowledge that the attorney misrepresented the Bayfront Advisory Commission. That is, they did not express they were comfortable with the proposal since they did not offer an opinion at that November meeting. And they recently notified this council in writing concerning previously approved Shore Drive community building limitations. Another misrepresentation by the attorney was that the Senior Housing Advisory Committee approved it. Here are quotes from that November fifteenth meeting minutes regarding the Westminster application. Quote, "Applications for the pre-submital and SHAC meetings have been incomplete and submitted very close to the meeting dates. Committee engagement by the applicant has not taken place. Although the applicant has expressed a desire to expedite the modification of the conditional use permit and go before the Planning Commission in January 2020, the city will practice due diligence and cannot promise their review will be complete in January as requested." The bottom line is the code is in writing and can't be ignored, even though Westminster attorney inferred the City Council can disregard it and approve whatever they think is appropriate, because, quote, "He has no idea why a conflict exists," unquote. Wouldn't it be more prudent to study the background of the code and the impact of violating it? According to a FOIA request, Westminster has submitted incomplete or related information to city staff or committees on multiple occasions. Trying to expedite sounds like Westminster thinks the approval is predetermined by the Planning Commission and the City Council, and they can submit shoddy paperwork. Finally, is it lost on those who have reviewed this application that the two existing Westminster towers are fourteen stories, which meets the 901 restriction? Maybe there's something to that code, and it should only reinforce the existence of the restriction. Excuse me for a moment. I'd like to shift to another topic. When asked about Westminster exclusiveness, the attorney stated, quote, "It's not for everybody, and there are lots of products out there," unquote. This reinforced concerns raised by the opponents of the proposed expansion, and at least one Planning Commission member retorted to the attorney that while Westminster has stated that they will be helping to eliminate the shortage of senior housing in Virginia Beach, quote, "It's not for everybody," unquote. Regarding the attorney's and Westminster CEO's comment about affordability, how can it be affordable but not for everybody? That seems contradictory. Similarly, according to the city staff report, quote, "The City Housing Advisory Committee, who met with Westminster in November 2019, stated there is currently a lack of available higher-end senior living product in the city," unquote. The attorney stated that this will be affordable, but when is higher-end been affordable to the masses? Additionally, according to applicant session minutes of that November Senior Housing Committee meeting, the committee asked, quote, "Do you offer affordable housing? Speak to the criteria." Westminster's response, quote, "Grant programs exist for down payment assistance for lower-income applicants who have served the community," unquote. It was noted that the grant was not publicized, so not many take advantage of it. Let this sink in for a second. "The grant program was not publicized," is that a means to prevent applications from lower-income citizens, as they indicate? And what does a lower-income applicant who has served the community actually mean? Similarly, has any city representative asked about the diversity at Westminster? The community is private, can theoretically accept anyone they want. When I asked for the demographics from their marketing and sales office in July, they told me that there are over six-hundred residents, and only one percent are minority. Given the benefit of the doubt to that number of residents, and rounding up, that means only seven or eight residents of Westminster, out of six to seven-hundred residents there, are minorities. Seven or eight. They also said that, quote, "Caucasians and minorities typically take care of their elderly differently," that minorities often don't have the resources to apply, and finally restated, "It's not for everybody." Finally, all the pictures of Westminster, on the Westminster website, only show Caucasians. Is this a type of community that City Council is willing to throw their support behind? Given all those unanswered questions I've provided you, I request you disapprove the application. Thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
The next speaker is Jamie Forrest. And after Ms. Forrest will be Pete Solan.
When addressing funding at the Planning Commission hearing, the Westminster attorney tried to sound benevolent with the following monetary incentives regarding residents who desire to move there. One, the Westminster Foundation helps fund some people applying to live there by paying the difference for them. Two, one-third of the units are subsidized by the more expensive units, who pay a higher amount. And three, Westminster has a program that will pay the monthly fee and provide an eight-hundred-dollar-a-month stipend for residents that run out of funds for the rest of their lives. Oddly, the subsidizing contradicts comments made at the public presentations from December 2019 through February 2020. When Westminster representatives were asked, "Why twenty-two stories?", a common reply was, "Is the break-even point to make a profit." Asked why the entire footprint couldn't be five stories, which is similar heights of condominiums east and west of Westminster, they said that the cost to build wouldn't be worth the effort, or it was not economically feasible. None of those responses can be found in writing, but they were stated at the presentations. If that is true, and Westminster has such financial concerns about economically breaking even, how can they afford to subsidize one-third of the residents or let residents live for free for the rest of their lives? Think about that. One of the most pristine pieces of property in Virginia Beach, and arguably the hardest senior living center to gain admission in Hampton Roads, has residents living for free and others subsidized. Now, wouldn't you agree that contradicts the requirement for twenty-two stories to break even? No one is stating that they should not help residents who are unable to continue to pay, but don't state numbers to justify an argument, then state that other numbers don't matter when asked. Those inconsistent numbers should concern you. Finally, notwithstanding all of the above, has anybody from the city asked Westminster, "Why twenty-two stories? Why not twenty-one, why not twenty-three, or even thirty stories?" It's a simple question, but one that is of most importance. We have not heard one city representative ask how they arrived at twenty-two stories to better explain and justify their proposal's rationale. I'm asking you to please vote no for this proposal.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Pete Solan, and then Stacy Solan.
Good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, council members, I am Pete Solan, 2904 Brighton Beach Place, adjacent to the proposed expansion, speaking in opposition. At the March eleventh Planning Commission hearing, the Westminster attorney stated they had received over fifty letters and emails of support. He also said sixty-four Westminster residents were present to support the expansion. That's just nine percent of its roughly seven-hundred residents. What he didn't say was that three letters, three of those letters actually opposed expansion. Nine were from businesses, two were counted twice, and two were from arguably biased contributors, the husband of the former Westminster PR director and a staffer from a nearby hotel, which will directly benefit from the expansion. Of over five hundred of the Westminster waiting lists, only five early-advantage members wrote. One was counted twice, certainly inadvertently, and another actually was written in opposition. So in fact, only thirty-five letters of support came from the more than twelve-hundred current and interested future Westminster residents. Twenty-three were form letters provided by management, requiring just a signature and address, leaving just twelve legitimate letters of support, far from the Westminster's attorney's allegation of over fifty letters. Only twelve valid letters, one percent of the current and prospective future residents. On the other hand, there were forty-six individually-written letters of opposition from local residents, another two from businesses in the immediate area, and even one from the Westminster waiting list. Forty-nine opposition letters, more than four times the twelve individually-written letters of support. letters of support. Now, how many civic leaders sent letters and emails in support? None, zero. The leaders and members of the Lynn Haven Colony Civic League representing the entire beachfront and inland area from the Lesnar Bridge to West Great Neck Road strongly opposed the expansion in a letter to council. There's no other civic league in this area since civic leagues do not overlap. The Shore Drive Community Coalition, representing several civic leagues along Shore Drive, published a survey less than a month before the March Planning Commission meeting. It received three hundred ninety-seven objections out of five hundred fifteen responses. At seventy-seven percent of respondents objected, nearly eight times the number of support letters received by Westminster. The Shore Drive Community Coalition strongly opposes the proposed Westminster expansion, as do my family and I, and we hope you as a body will vote no on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Stacy Solant. And then the next speaker will be David Link.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing us this time this evening. At the March eleventh Planning Commission hearing, the Westminster attorney said, "We met with the Bayfront Advisory Committee, the BAC, in November and there were no objections or concerns." At this hearing, the Westminster attorney misrepresented the BAC by making the claim that the BAC approved the project. The BAC sent an email to the city council on July twenty-fourth stating they had not approved the proposed Westminster expansion and requested an official delay to review the proposed expansion more closely. In addition, the Westminster attorney had stated he presented to the Shore Drive Community Coalition, which is untrue. Westminster did not officially present the expansion proposal to the SDCC until just three weeks prior to the last Planning Commission meeting. The city staff and the Westminster attorney have both claimed the BAC and the SDCC are comfortable with the Westminster expansion. Those claims are simply untrue. The attorney has stated, "We've done our best to reach out and city staff had the expansion plans for a year." In fact, the neighboring condo associations had not even been informed of the Westminster expansion until the very end of 2019, just weeks prior to a scheduled Planning Commission meeting in January, and many associations have never been presented with the plan. According to the minutes of the Senior Housing Advisory Committee meeting held in November, Westminster stated outreach programs are planned that will bring the residents and surrounding community together. Yet, the committee later reported community engagement by the application, applicant has not taken place. It is only due to the efforts of the FDCC that there is any awareness of this project among our area residents. Westminster has misled the community and the nearby property owners will be directly affected by their project. And their stated best efforts in educating its neighbors about the proposed expansion project have fallen well short of our public expectations. Please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is David Link. And after Mr. Link is Joni Dunham.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name's David Link. I live in Vineyard at Seashore, which is adjacent to, about a hundred and fifty feet adjacent to the proposed Assisted Living Memory Care Center. I represent the condo association and we oppose this based on the grounds of, we don't, we have to date yet to receive any notice from Westminster Canterbury, even though our building is across a paper street, a hundred and fifty feet away from the actual building site of the Assisted Living Center. I also know that the Baybreeze condos right next to us, which are also a hundred and fifty feet away, have not, also not been informed or anything. We have had to actually be informed ourselves. Just to give me, give you a little background about me, I am a fire captain paramedic for the city of Norfolk for over twenty years. There is a reason why you do not build a building over a hundred and sixty-five feet that houses seniors. And that is basically the amount of time, basically reflex time, that it takes us to get there and to get into the building to a potential patient or somebody like that. So, the bigger the more complex the building, the longer it takes. Seniors, based on a study that I, I have actually already provided online, are, account for a third of all EMS calls. So, these, these buildings are actually going to generate more EMS calls for that area. In addition to that, there's also, at Bay Lake, another two hundred and eight units that has already been approved. And then also, what's the name of that one? Overture is also a sixty-two-plus community, which is not, is an apartment community that's not fully full, full at this point. About seven hundred and fifty senior living units right in one area. My question would be to the council, is there any plans to actually improve EMS coverage in that area, given that there's going to be larger demands? The second part of this is when, if there was a building emergency, and unlikely an evacuation wouldn't be caused by just a single apartment or anything catching fire, there's building controls and everything like that. But what if there was a gas leak or a refrigeration leak or a CO emergency?
Thank you very much.
There's other things that would cause...
Appreciate it, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question for the speaker.
Okay.
Sir?
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 Mr. Moss has a question.
First of all, thank you for your first responder service, but since you are a fighting professional, were you citing or can you provide us the reference? Is there a firefighting table or is there some kind of certification that the firepeople say or insurance companies that, so that's just your experience reference point?
Uh, there is nothing that I could find.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, you know, I had another quick question.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir, are you familiar with the Harbor's Edge, the new tower that's being constructed there?
Yes. I recently moved from that station, that, that Station Six, which is right there at Colley and Fairfax Avenue, and I responded there for over a year. I've been in that building all the time. That's why I actually have experience of how long it takes to get into these buildings and get up to where a potential senior might be having a medical emergency.
But that, you're referring to the original tower? Have you, you're familiar with the new tower that's under construction?
Oh, yeah, it's almost all the way up to twenty-two floors the last time I was downtown.
Right, thank you, I just wanted to make sure you...
The next speaker is Joni Dunham. And after Ms. Dunham is MC Mundon.
Good evening.
Good evening. Nice to be here, Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for, for having us. My name is Joni Dunham and I live at twenty-four twenty-eight Ocean Shore Crescent. And I am a very new resident of Virginia Beach. I got to move in just before COVID hit. And it's been interesting learning about this process and what's happening with Westminster Canterbury. And one of the things I'd like to do is just talk a little bit about the Planning Commission members and questions that were asked and the answers that came from the Westminster Canterbury attorney. A commission member asked, "Why the tower, which is adjacent to the condos in which I live, can't be flip-flapped from the east side of the property, where the Lynn Haven Fish House parking lot is currently located, to the west where Casa Del Playa sits?" And the attorney stated that it would block the view of Westminster Canterbury residents and they're entitled to their view. He elaborated by stating they designed a forty-six-foot setback, which is four times the amount required by ordinance, and maintained, and this is a quote, "We're not blocking one person's view at Ocean Shore." He also stated that if anyone in the six condos that will have their view blocked by the proposed memory care building had concerns, why weren't they at the Planning Commission meeting to protest? Well, if you look, there's a couple of slides that will give you some visual picture of what the impact actually is for some of the condos at Ocean Shore and also off of Starfish Road. The first and second slides, the attorney's response epitomizes the hypocrisy involved. First, is anyone entitled to a view? That can be debated, but his statement that Westminster Canterbury residents are entitled to their view indicates that being a good neighbor, as he has claimed repeatedly, only goes so far. It's okay not to block their view, but it's okay to block ours. His statement about the forty-six-foot setback not blocking the Ocean Shore waterfront condos is correct if you talk about waterfront only, but as you can see, the expansion will block the sightlines of six Ocean Shore condos that are not on the water, which contradicts his statement. Six is a lot more than zero. And if you look at the third and fourth slides, there are six condos on Starfish Road with rooftop decks and they'll lose their view entirely. And three other condos with partial sightlines will also lose their views. The attorney has commented about being a good neighbor, but...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I ask you to vote no.
The next speaker is MC Mundon. And after Ms. Mundon is Fred Levitin.
Good evening, MC.
Good evening. Hi, I'm MC Mundon, a resident of Cape Story by the sea since nineteen seventy-seven, when I bought a single-family home in Cape Story offshore drive. Almost all of Shore Drive was single-family homes and we used the Belo grocery store, Clats Market, McCollie's Pharmacy, and the local schools and libraries. Seagate condo was the big thirteen, maybe fourteen-story structure, West Great Neck Road and Shore Drive, and I was told that was for rich Virginia Beach people. And Westminster was a big brick building that was a big, had big cranes around it about that time, and that was for really rich elderly people to live there until they died and then their living space was sold to another really rich elderly person. So, no real sense of establishing family home, family community like with our single-family homes that usually are left to families when we die. Westminster does not need the local merchants and services as the services provided are excellent, they're wonderful services, they have great restaurants there, their medical care is wonderful, I believe they even have a small retail pharmacy in-house and self-contained on campus, which is excellent for elderly living. Caregivers, however, frequently need parking spaces. Westminster does require a lot of public services, as you heard from another speaker, and I believe it is the number one destination of the Ocean Park Volunteer Rescue Squad. I do hope that Ocean Park makes a good donation to Ocean Park annually because they are voluntary. Also noted is a second fire station on Shore Drive that's a benefit to all and this is since Westminster has, has come to be there. Concern on the population explosion on Shore Drive due to the huge building in the nineties and two thousand, condos on the bay are fifteen to eighteen stories, the hotel is eight stories. Today, not only is the population growing, but is focused on senior living, over sixty-two. We have Westminster Canterbury, we have the over sixty-two overlooked condos by Lesnar Bridge, Bay Lake Assisted Living, and the Pearl at Marina Shores is getting ready to open. The Westminster plant wants a twenty-two-story glass tower expansion on the bay. I believe eight to eleven stories would seem more appropriate, but not twenty-two. Seems to many the focus of the Planning Commission is to increase building for a target group of senior elderly, maybe thinking less use of roads, maybe schools, unless of course they're raising the grandchildren, but more need for emergency and rescue services likely. And city council is the last approval, has the last approval needed for the projects. Shore Drive Council Representatives Lynn Haven and Bayside have not been able to even listen to the single-family homeowner concerns due to conflicts of interest and are not able to vote on the Westminster Canterbury issue. The Bayfront Advisory Commission has also...
Thank you, MC.
The next speaker is Fred Levitin. And then the next speaker will be Patricia Piper.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Fred Levitin. I'm retired and I live at Ocean Shore Condos, which is adjacent to the proposed extension of Westminster Canterbury. Some of my comments have already been addressed, but I hope you'll listen to my remarks. The height and materials of this bayfront building is way out of character, which is already built on the bay. At the Planning Commission, it was called iconic, perhaps for town center next to the western, but not for the residential bayfront. They say it needs to be twenty-two stories to make the project work. They took away, if they took away the fancy five-story condos and replaced both buildings with two fourteen-story brick buildings, they would have more than enough to make the project work. This would also blend in with what is already there. Bridges over Ocean Shore and Starfish are for convenience, not a necessity. It would take away from the neighborhood look and make it more of a commercial setting. It already takes away from the open feeling that you have on both streets. They say a study was done that indicated assisted living, however, their sales are more for retired bayfront living. Noise doing, the demolition and construction of this project for the next two to five years will be extremely hard to live with. The constant flow of dump and cement trucks will add a great deal of traffic to both Ocean Shore and Starfish. It would be a big help if trucks entered from Shore Drive through Westminster's parking lot straight to Starfish. They would then come out very close to both building sites. Wind-blown debris and pile driving causing a need for clean, cleanup and repair has been addressed by Westminster Canterbury. However, I'd like to see it included in the papers passed by council. Moving the beach access is also a concern. We already have a beach access on our east property line. This would cause us to have beach access on both sides of our property, which potentially would cause great crowding during the summer months. I counted more than a hundred and fifty cars parked in their open lots. If one lot is built on, where are the other seventy-five cars going to park? We already have a sixty-two-and-over building quite close to the Lesnar Bridge, which is not even half rented. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker is Patricia Piper. And after Mr. Piper is Marina Licouris.
Good evening.
Good evening. I do appreciate and thank the city council and mayor for allowing me to speak. I must have a special thanks to Ms. Henley.
Ma'am, can you pull the microphone down just a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
A special thanks to Ms. Henley and Mr. Landfair for returning my calls. I am a Virginia Beach native, my roots are here. My mother drove school bus for twenty-six years, my father was a highway inspector. My uncle, one of my uncles, was the very first plumbing inspector of Virginia Beach when the merge of Virginia Beach and Princeton County. However, I have lived in Richmond, Roanoke, and Big Stone Gap. I always knew I was home when I got close and I could smell the salt air. I would like, would, I mean, it would be nice if all that wonderful air is not completely blocked, maybe the building's not so tall. I think the city should make sure that the city access to the beach... I think the city should make sure that the city access to the beach is retained for residents in the neighborhood. I think that's it, and I do appreciate being able to speak.
Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Marina La Chorus. And then after Ms. La Chorus is Mary Sykes.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name's Marina La Chorus. I live at Ship's Watch Condominium Association, the president of the association there, and we're the complex just east of Ocean Shore Complex on Ocean Shore Drive. I'm here to oppose the application for Westminster Canterbury's expansion. Your zoning ordinance, this is our zoning ordinance, section 220, which talks about conditional use permits, states it shall be the duty of the city council under the provisions of this article to evaluate the impact and the compatibility of each proposed use and to stipulate such conditions and restrictions, including those specifically contained herein, as will assure the use being compatible with the neighborhood in which it is located, both in terms of existing land uses and conditions and in terms of development proposed or permitted by right in the area, or where that cannot be accomplished, to deny the use as not being in accordance with the adopted comprehensive plan or being incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood. To do your duty to the citizens of Virginia Beach, you must deny this application. As proposed, it's not compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Let me highlight just a few of these incompatibilities. First, as you've heard, the 22-story glass building is not consistent with anything in the neighborhood. It exceeds the 165-foot height, which Westminster Canterbury itself in 1998 honored when it was building the last tower built there. The glass building is not consistent with any of the architecture in our area and, in fact, is a hazard to birds that'll be using the Atlantic flyway to migrate up and down the East Coast. There are limits to the use of public resources that are presented by this proposed expansion. The pedestrian walkways that will go over public streets that may be okay, as people have said, at the oceanfront or town center, other commercial areas, but are incompatible with our residential bayfront community. The beach easement access move will move the access to the other side of the pier at Lynn Haven Fish House, which will restrict access by the public to the beach in front of Westminster Canterbury and is another incompatibility with our community. And finally, I'd like to reference the pavilion that the design says is going to replace the Lynn Haven Fish House, which extends out over the public beach and is only going to be available to the residents of Westminster Canterbury and may even need a wetlands permit. There's been some reference to that.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Appreciate it.
The next speaker is Mary Sykes, and after Ms. Sykes is Todd Solomon. Mary Sykes. Todd Solomon, and after Mr. Solomon is Stephen Marcy.
Good evening, Mayor Dyer. I was told that I would get 10 minutes, but in the hopes to speed this along, a lot has been said, I've cut it down, so I'm going to try and do it in three. Hopefully, I meet that. Good evening, Mayor Dyer. What's left of council members, I guess, 50% here? That's good. I appreciate your time tonight. My name's Todd Solomon. I'm the representative for the Shore Drive Community Coalition. It's a group that's been in existence for the past 20 years. Our main goal is to maintain, preserve, make Shore Drive safer. We've worked with the city in many issues. We've helped preserve Pleasure House Point. We've made Shore Drive safer for pedestrians. We've taken death tolls from three per year down to one every three years. So, we've done a lot with the city. We pride ourselves on working with the city in all kinds of aspects. We also like to learn about the codes. As you have found out here, all these volunteers are pretty smart now on codes, plans, guidelines. They all learn that on their own, and that's something we try and instill in everybody on the Shore Drive community. Unfortunately, this project is probably one of the worst in civic engagement processes that I've dealt with in 20 years of working with the city. I don't understand why, but it's been 10 months, and the only real public engagement that we've actually had that a city representative was at or staff was at was the planning commission meeting. All of you have run on positions to make civic engagement better as part of your platforms for running these positions, and yet, none of you have come out at our invites to any civic meeting to watch a presentation at a civic meeting or talk with a citizen. It's fortunate that we get ahold of you sometimes on the phone, but a lot of phones, calls aren't responded to people. So, again, civic engagement has been a problem with this. In doing so, SDCC created a study, a survey, to try and get the citizens' input on this for the planning commission. It was mentioned earlier, 515 people, 515 took the survey. 77% said they were opposed to this development. 92 said that there should be more civic engagements, 92%. 90% of the 515 felt that this would be a precedent-setting decision that you make that would change the future of Shore Drive to high-density and high towers. High rises, high towers. So, I mean, we're trying our best. Over the past 20 years, the main theme that's come up is trying to maintain the density of Shore Drive. As you know, 36 units per acre is the maximum on Shore Drive, and we've been trying to fight to at least keep it capped at that. Unfortunately, this project is 255% over what the overlay district has. Incredible number. Again, the decision tonight isn't to make, rather not to make senior living here, it's how big and how dense should it be? You can make it smaller, you can make it in accordance with the overlays. In fact, New Millennium, which you approved, your council approved three years ago, up near Taste Unlimited, that has been done in accordance with the overlay districts, 220 units. Oh, sorry. So, is that my three minutes? I apologize. But I'm only up, oh, I didn't cut it down way enough. I apologize to you. But anyways, you did approve that. It met the requirements, it met the acreage, it met the zoning, it met the density. I don't know why. Unfortunately, they've only bought two and a half acres, and they want to try and make something larger. They could do.
Todd.
The next speaker is Stephen Marcy. And then Barbara Messner.
Good evening. My name is Stephen J. Marcy, and my wife and I reside at 511 Bunker Drive in the Larkspur subdivision of Virginia Beach. We also have a second residence at Bay Breeze Villa condominium at 2325 Seashell Road, which is just east of the easternmost acreage on which Westminster Canterbury wishes to expand. I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposal before you, but to be clear, I am not in opposition to Westminster Canterbury expanding. In fact, I'm quite in favor of it. I'm just in opposition to this proposal for expansion. A query. How comfortable is the city with the ultimate responsibility in emergency in having to evacuate seniors with a vast range of physical, mental capacities from a 22-story building, putting at risk not only the Westminster Canterbury residents, but also the city's emergency responders? And has the city costed maintaining the equipment necessary for such a rescue along with the training and manpower necessary? I would like to see Westminster Canterbury be a better neighbor regarding the bay. From the eastern entrance of the Lesnar Bridge to Fort Story, the least amount of vegetation along the shore is at Westminster Canterbury. I know, I've walked it. I believe the seawall there has adversely affected plant growth. I would like to see Westminster Canterbury proffer a dune and shoreline restoration plan as part of its expansion, any expansion. That could include demolishing the Casa del Playa Bayfront condominiums and the erstwhile Lynn Haven Fish House restaurant. As a model, I ask each and every one of you to look at Mariner's Mark. The condominium at the end of Great Neck Road, set beyond the dune line, the dune preservation and vegetation is worthy of praise. However, the Lynn Haven Shore's neighborhood does have a unique charm, partly due to its eclectic architecture. I would not be opposed to Westminster Canterbury preserving the restaurant, even if converted to another use, to honor Virginia Beach's history, such markers being sorely lacking in this city. And the Casa del Playa condominiums could be retained and modified, retrofitted, if you will, as a facility's independent living area. With even dire predictions of global sea rise sadly understating reality, I think Westminster Canterbury would be wise to locate their structures further away from the shoreline. I think that 50 years from now, they will be thanking themselves for that decision, and so will those who will be considering relocating there, relocating there at that time. I'd like to apologize for stumbling over some words, my lack of eloquence, but I wish to assure this council that I am more than make up for that for my passion with the bay. As one example, upon my death and the death of the survivor, or the death of my survivor, my wife and me, my entire estate, every penny, is going 50% to the Chesapeake Bay Foundation and 50% to the Lynn Haven River now. I'm giving everything I have to support this fragile and vulnerable treasure of nature, and I know it's not enough. I'm just asking for a little help.
Thank you very much, sir.
Next speaker is Barbara Messner. And after Ms. Messner is Andy Vann.
I would like my note back that I did not give to other people, Mr. Styles. Thank you. I opposed this project. I lived over there, I watched them. I lived on Starfish at one time, and I watched the second building being built, and I've watched the gradual erosion over there with all the new approvals. Atlantic Shores, and I think it's Beth Shalom, they're inland. There's no reason why we need to keep building, you know, this housing over there on the same side and expanding it. We don't even have access, we don't even have the fishing pier anymore. There are major problems everywhere in the city, including traffic, crime, and, you know, I read a lot of the documents going back to March, and there's a lot of money, taxpayer money, federal dollars, that'll be spent to keep replenishing the sand. I haven't even heard anyone talk about that. There's also conflicts with some of the people who are involved that are on the rack and that the city hires. HUD will be subsidizing most of the senior housing. It used to be 55 and up, now, for some reason, it's changed to 62 and up. I mean, this picture, this is hideous, absolutely hideous. This tower with all this, all these buildings around it, and, you know, all the people who said they were going to abstain, where is everyone? I didn't hear anyone say anything about who was here and who wasn't. But I've taken photos of some of the deadly fires and some of the horrible fires over there. I hope this shows up on the video. The high density over there, there's been major fires. This is one of the vehicles that was burned. The firemen from Norfolk talked about, you know, the safety. A lot of people have talked about safety. And as far as abstaining, you know, this is the first time I've ever seen a chart where people who have, you know, who abstained have put it out in writing, and then they don't, they don't show up to vote. But Ms. Wilson's, that's not three minutes.
Messner, thank you.
All right.
The next speaker is Andy Vann. And after Mr. Vann is Tim Solnik.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Thank you very much for giving us your time. It is long, and I don't have to tell you that, but I can tell you that I'm grateful. I live in Cape Story, and I like the sky. Nobody debates retirement housing and its value or the economic impact, it's just where would that occur? And in this proposition, it occurs in the Shore Drive Corridor Overlay District. And why is that relevant? It's been alluded to, but why is that relevant? It's because, according to 1702, "All such properties shall be subject to the requirements of this article as well as to all other regulations, and to the extent that any provision of this article conflicts with any other ordinance or regulation, the more restrictive provision shall control." So, more restrictive in that district. So, height limits or the absence of height limits, and I suggest to you that the legislative intent of that is descriptive deliberately because you put it in there. The purpose of the Shore Drive Corridor Overlay District is to enhance the appearance of the area encompassed by the district and to preserve its vitality as an important gateway to the city. The Shore Drive Corridor Plan and Shore Drive Corridor Design Guidelines are provided for this district, the purpose of which is to encourage development that is appropriate to the district. 22 stories is not appropriate. For those of us that like the sky and like to look out over the trees of where we live, we like to see sky, and that's the way it's been, and that's the way it is, except that if it were a 22-story building, it wouldn't be. So, please, keep Shore Drive development appropriate to the district, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Tim Solnik. And then after Mr. Solnik is Wally Damon.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, city council. My name is Tim Solnik. I have lived in the Shore Drive residential community since 1996. I oppose this overreaching, massive speculative development as it does not fit in the Shore Drive residential community. 13 years ago, in 2007, four members of the Virginia Beach Wetlands Board made the choice to uphold the rules and regulations their regulatory body was charged to uphold. For some, it was a difficult choice to make as there was a lot of pressure put on them due to the fact of a massive amount of money and power was in favor of the Wetlands Board violating their own rules and regulations. Four of them chose to do the right thing and voted to deny the overreaching application that violated the Wetlands Board rules and regulations to build on Pleasure House Point. They also knew the permanent precedent they'd be setting if they chose to violate not only the rules and regulations they were charged to enforce, but also the spirit of those rules and regulations. Tonight, you have a similar choice to make. Do you want your name on the permanent record for voters to see approving this overreaching, massive speculative redevelopment that does not meet the Bayfront Advisory Committee guidelines, the Senior Housing Advisory Committee guidelines, the Shore Drive Corridor Plan, the Shore Drive Overlay District guidelines, the ULI study, the comprehensive plan, or the zoning ordinance? Nor does it provide affordable city senior housing. Does a minimum requirement of having $800,000 in assets to apply sound like they're even attempting to supply affordable city housing? attempting to supply affordable city housing? By definition of being here, they want special treatment from you, City Council. They're asking you, City Council, to go against the rules and regulations that you uphold to protect the citizens who elect you. We sincerely hope you do the right thing and deny this massive, overreaching, speculative development that will forever change the character of Shore Drive residential community if you approve it. Ladies and gentlemen, please do the right thing. Deny this. This is about setting a precedent that would change the character of Shore Drive and other areas in Virginia Beach. Be leaders like those four at the Wetlands Board in 2007.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Wally Damon, and after Mr. Damon is Mark McConaith.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Dyer, how are you? Good to see you. My name is Wallace Earl Damon Jr. I've lived in the Shore Drive corridor of Virginia Beach, well, long before it was Virginia Beach, since Eisenhower was president. I've heard it said that we're a city of three beaches. In my background as a construction manager, I've worked in all three of our beaches. We as residents celebrate the fact that we have these distinct differences in these three beaches. A 22-story building like this belongs on the oceanfront. If we allow this on the bay, it will set a bad precedent. All the developers will want this same opportunity, which they would deserve, and where will we be then when a Category 3, 4, or 5 hurricane shows up and we have to evacuate everybody on Shore Drive? We are 25% more dense, Shore Drive is 25% more dense than any other section in Virginia Beach. How are we going to evacuate all these seniors that are coming? And I believe that, I believe a lot of seniors are still trying to come. In my construction management curriculum, critical path method scheduling was taught, how we develop a plan. How about the poor, the sick, and the infirm? What about Katrina? Remember Katrina? Remember that building that was across the street from the police station? One-third of the police officers and firemen in New Orleans fled with their families. Why can't that happen in Virginia Beach? What makes us think that that would not happen here? We've got to do something better here. We've got to kick this down the road, we've got to kick this can down the road, we've got to come up with a better idea. Please write these things down, CPMS, Critical Path Method Scheduling. We have to have a better idea, ladies and gentlemen. We've got a monster coming toward us one day, and we've got to be able to make a plan and get ready for it. Our Virginia Beach fire trucks only reach up 105 feet for a ladder truck or a bucket truck. That's all we've got, and that's all I've got. I hope that you guys make the right decision here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mark McConaith. And after Mr. McConaith is Doug Bray.
Welcome.
Welcome, thank you. Hello, members of the council, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Mark McConaith, and I'm a Cape Story resident. I'm opposed to the expansion plan for a few simple reasons, starting with overall scale. As you know, the Shore Drive Corridor is comprised of a diverse blend of commercial, residential, public use, and natural stakeholders, and balancing this diversity is a primary factor responsible for the successful community model for which this area has long been prized. That's why they want to move here. A 22-story building of this magnitude would be clearly visible from the mainland of the eastern shore as the dominant shoreline feature. By comparison, the proposed structure would tower nearly 100 feet or 62% taller than the Cape Henry Lighthouse, the very insignia on that flag. I ask council, is this what we want people to see of Virginia Beach from across the water? By comparison, if I was submitting a zoning variance to add seven stories to my existing two-story bayfront home so that all of my aging friends and relatives could have affordable housing and look at the beach every day without providing any hardship as to why my lot should receive special consideration, the zoning board would politely say no with a vote of seven to zero. Exactly what hardship in this case warrants demolishing our current zoning standards that couldn't be located in a less sensitive area? With a headline that reads "Affordable Senior Living" and without a detailed technical impact disclosure, the financial intent behind this proposal becomes clear, and the vote against is obvious. Finally, every coastal community on the eastern seaboard has committees working feverishly to plan for rising sea levels. Clearly, a rational person would scratch his head and wonder how it is possible that we are not only continuing to build in this front-lined area, but to significantly build significantly taller than what the current zoning regulations already allow. What would these sea level planning committees say to this proposal? Have they even been polled? The submitted application available for public review provides no details to discuss stormwater management, coastal erosion, and flooding, or the amount of impact associated with cramming 22 stories of people on the shoreline of the Chesapeake Bay. These are hot topic electoral issues that will become the planning and fiscal responsibility of council as soon as the occupancy permit is signed, a painful scenario all too familiar in recent years. In summary, the only reason to locate a 22-story facility on the pristine shoreline of the Chesapeake Bay is corporate profit. I'm not against expansion within current zoning limits, they are great neighbors, but be aware of anything that requires a deviation from our current codes in a sensitive area without providing any rationale as to why or what our other options are. The residents in this area have seen too many times where a developer verbalizes a plan at a public meeting to gain approval, but submits final drawings for something altogether different and leaves the city to deal with the negative impacts in the name of affordable housing. Please limit the current expansion plan to existing zoning ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Doug Bray, and after Mr. Bray is Conrad Shisventer. Doug Bray. And then mayors and members of council, after Ms. Shisventer, we'll go to the WebEx speakers.
Okay. Good evening.
I have a goal, never be extremely pro or anti-development, so I created a checklist. First, new projects should be conscious of flooding and the environment. Second, developers should not be heavy in council pockets. Third, citizens should want the development. Fourth, did taxpayers go to the project that could otherwise be elsewhere? Fifth, did developers act predatorially in order to begin the project? Simple formula. I know being on the bayfront brings on long-term risks, however, surrounding buildings and houses have similar risks and are free to be there. Plus, I hear WC's plants have environment and fresh stormwater systems in mind, so that passes muster. Now, I'm also viscerally opposed to the corruptive effects of big money and politics, and I've checked, and I haven't yet seen any Westminster money donated to any campaigns, so that also passes muster. Community acceptance on the project is very vital. I'm attending the Virginia Beach Council of Civic Organizations meeting for over a year, and most commonly brought up topics are the Thalia Wayside and Westminster Canterbury developments. There is angst in the room about the projects, and the Thalia one has at least already been pulled on that angst. There is great pushback in the Shore Drive area for Westminster, so that does not pass muster. The project is over $400 million. Basically, that's four Virginia Beach police departments. That's a lofty number, however, the project is all private capital, thusly it's not calling on city resources, and that passes muster. Canterbury also did a slow, sort of hostile takeover of the surrounding condos at Casa de La Playa. They brought one condo at a time in order to secure enough leverage over board control. Then they changed bylaws, gaining the legal ability to remove tenants from the building with no effect of prohibition on their being forced out. Almost three years ago, before they had the leverage, President Onkel told the Virginia Pilot, "We don't have an end goal that everyone is worried about," and that predatory chess game does not pass the checklist muster. So, if I was on council and this was on my deck, I'd go no. Let's see what your checklist say.
Mayor, members of council, we're now moving to the WebEx speakers. Speaker, when I call your name, if you would just pause two to three seconds before you begin your comments, and don't ask if we can hear you, just if we can't hear you, we'll connect back and ask you to unmute or something, or whatever, if there's a technical difficulty, we'll let you know. The first one is Craig Besic, and then after Mr. Besic will be Shirley Wharton. Mr. Besic, if you'll, Besic, I'm sorry, if you'll pause two to three seconds before you begin your comments.
Hello. Mayor Dyer and the honorable members of City Council, my name is Craig Besic, and I reside at 3100 Shore Drive, Westminster Canterbury. I would like to thank everyone in the opposition to for allowing me to be on the telephone tonight to speak for three minutes about why I am supporting Westminster Canterbury's expansion as presented. I feel confident that the expansion will benefit the current city residents and future generations, and most importantly, the city's tax revenue. A lot has been said about Westminster Canterbury, what it has to offer. I don't think there's any big disagreement about that. I'm not going to repeat a lot of that in the interest of time. I will go to some other topics maybe that haven't quite been brought out. The opposition seems to be hung up on the height of the building, okay, the view, can understand that, the noise level, yes, and then the issue of setting a precedence. All right, that can all be worked out somehow, maybe, but there is one issue that is creating controversy, and it is about interpreting the city council's legality, deviating from zoning laws. The lawyers just don't seem to read the same document and understand it the same way from what we're understanding out here on the other side of the TV world. You know, you, City Council, you have the authority. The City Council has been chosen by the citizens of Virginia Beach as the best person to protect and act on behalf of the people, best interest in the city, and get the best taxation for the city. City Council, you've been elected, you're the best of the best out there, you can make these decisions. And the reason I bring that up is because seven months ago, okay, I've got three seconds, seven months ago, we all understand how an enemy has attacked Virginia Beach and the world and caused economic destruction, taking iconic names with it, household names that have been in existence forever. I've got a list here, I don't have time to read them. GNC vitamins, though, Lord &amp; Taylor's, you know them all, Brooks Brothers, all out of business. To me, that's millions and millions of dollars of tax money that is not coming in to the city. I guess my 30 minutes are up. I won't go into the 30% of the...
Appreciate it. The next speaker is Shirley Wharton. Ms. Wharton, if you will pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, and after Ms. Wharton is Michelle Afano.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Wharton, and I've been a resident of Westminster Canterbury for 10 years. I'm what they call a legacy resident, meaning that my parents were also residents of Westminster Canterbury. I'm a native of Hampton Roads, and we raised our family in Virginia Beach. I'm a retired local healthcare executive and registered nurse. I chose Westminster Canterbury as my forever home after seeing how my parents were cared for, respected, and how much they enjoyed living in the Westminster Canterbury community. Having worked for 40 years in the healthcare industry, specifically in numerous hospitals in our area, I'm very familiar with the increasing need for senior living facilities. When doing my research for which community I would choose to live in, the choices were very limited. My focus was on where I would receive outstanding skilled nursing care if and when the need arose. The choice was easy. After reviewing Westminster Canterbury's history of five-star Medicare ratings and spotless quality results, I knew that that was where I wanted to live. The fact that it is located on the Chesapeake Bay and the focus is on keeping me healthy, active, and joyful every day were an added plus. One recent example of Westminster Canterbury's outstanding quality is that we have not had any cases of the COVID-19 virus during this pandemic in our HOE Center, our skilled nursing facility, and our plan of care and infection control is a model for the state of Virginia. Westminster Canterbury has gone above and beyond to provide a safe and comfortable environment for all of its residents during this pandemic, and I would like to clarify that we are free to go and come off-campus as we please, with the only restriction being that we can't dine in the communal dining rooms. Over the last 10 years, I've watched Westminster Canterbury continue to grow and support the Virginia Beach community. In the past eight years, new programs have been developed. Westminster Canterbury at Home, our home healthcare agency, and the Westminster Canterbury Hospice not only serve the residents of Westminster Canterbury, but the community at large. Our residents also support and volunteer with many local organizations. Westminster Canterbury caters to a diverse population of residents from all walks of life. As a member of the Westminster Canterbury Foundation Board, I have witnessed firsthand the generosity shown to residents who need financial assistance, to employees and their families for emergency funds and scholarships, and to the Virginia Beach community in need. Please allow us to continue to grow and expand so that we are in a position to offer this outstanding senior living community to Virginia Beach seniors for years to come. This project has the total support of all of our residents, and we are a unified group in support of this project. Please vote yes for the Westminster Canterbury expansion proposal, keeping Virginia Beach as one of the top cities to retire and live in, and allowing Westminster Canterbury to survive, thrive, and continue their legacy.
The next speaker is Michelle Afano. Ms. Afano, if you would pause two to three seconds, and then after Ms. Afano will be Carl Felty.
Hello, this is Michelle Afano. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, and City Council members for allowing us to speak. I am a retired registered nurse and healthcare executive, working more than 40 years in the healthcare industry. I've lived in Virginia Beach for 17 years, and I've been a resident of Westminster Canterbury for the past four. I've heard many comments about Westminster Canterbury tonight that are not accurate, and I hope people will seek to find that information out so that this can be shown how inaccurate some of these comments have been. We have not been locked up, we have been well-cared-for during this period of time. Throughout my career, I have worked closely with the senior population and observed the need for quality, affordable healthcare for seniors. Now I am part of that population, and more than 10 years ago, I evaluated all the services within Virginia Beach to determine the best place for me to retire and enjoy, excuse me, enjoy my senior years while having access to quality healthcare at all levels. Westminster Canterbury has stood out in this regard as the right place, a long history of quality, affordable care. As a not-for-profit life care community, it is a gem in the city that I call home. This is accomplished for a diverse age group. It is a family, and the fact that Westminster Canterbury has not had any COVID in the nursing home or assisted living is a testament to the solid policies that have always been in place. The fact that we have only had one independent living resident test positive and that the virus did not spread from that person is further testament to the quality and oversight of Westminster Canterbury. Westminster Canterbury's history of exceptional care and continuous meeting of state and federal requirements since the beginning means that this is a model to expand on, this is a model to build on, this is where you would want to place your loved one or to age and retire yourself. When completed, this project will address the senior housing shortage without any public taxpayer financial contribution, but most of all, it will expand one of the highest quality, best models for senior independent living, assisted living, memory care, and long-term care in the region. It's definitely a win-win for Virginia Beach and aging seniors and our community. I urge you to vote yes on the expansion application so Westminster can continue to provide Virginia Beach with exceptional senior living at no financial cost to the public. Thank you. Thank you.
The next speaker is Carl Felty, and after Mr. Felty will be Captain David Care.
Mr. Mayor, City Council members, and guests, I am Carol Felty, and I come to speak to you on behalf of the proposed expansion of Westminster Canterbury on the Bay. Along with my husband Bob, I am a part of the boomer generation for which more space at all levels of continuing life care is needed, not only for the Westminster Canterbury community, but for our city. In 1977, my husband Bob and I moved from northern Virginia to Kempsville with our two-year-old son to advance our careers, I with the Virginia Beach City Public Schools, and he as a civilian with the Navy. Six years later, we moved to the Great Neck Corridor. That early in our lives, we found WC and decided it would be our home and community for the second half of our retirement years. The East Tower had been built, but at this time, and we were, and we were well into our uh, the East Tower had been built at this time, and we were thrilled to see plans for the expansion into a West Tower come to fruition. Thank you to that City Council for enabling the future we are now enjoying. With the West Tower under construction, we became more resolved to see our earlier decision come to fulfillment. In 2018, we became full official residents of this wonderful community we now call home. Now it is time to advocate for its future, our future. As I referenced earlier, we boomers are arriving. Not only is additional space needed for us in independent living settings, it is desperately needed as we inevitably come to require the spaces and services of increasingly restrictive settings. A memory center and expanded assisted living facilities are critical aspects of our lifetime care agreements. Securing resident commitments for the proposed tower is what will enable us to have the funding to build sufficient spaces for our next levels of need. Please understand that restrictions have been put on Westminster Canterbury residents to carefully limit travel outside the campus in order to protect all residents, especially the more vulnerable among us. Residents are free to leave our campus if they self-quarantine for 14 days when they return and undergo a test to ensure that they are COVID-free. My husband and I did this, exercised this freedom for 17 days in August. We should not be compared to Guantanamo Bay, Cuba, for any reason. Those not quarantined in their apartments, as explained above, have full access to the entire array of indoor and outdoor campus amenities. Our protective systems work, we have zero positive cases of the virus. I ask you to be forward-thinking and approve our proposal. It can only enhance the reputation of the wonderful city we share. The future is going to happen, and we all need to be prepared. Thank you.
The next speaker is Captain David Carr. And after Captain Carr is Dr. Amir Hajmomenian.
Good evening. I am Captain David Carey. I have lived in Virginia Beach for 45 years and at Westminster Canterbury for 17 years. My mother lived here at Westminster Canterbury for 16 years in the 80s and 90s. I proudly served in the United States Navy for 23 years, most of my time was in submarines. I can honestly say that the three best decisions I have made in my life are asking my wife Lynn to marry me, serving my country in the Navy, and retiring at Westminster Canterbury. I am not the only military man or woman who resides here. Currently, we have more than 50 residents who have proudly served in all branches of our armed forces. Over the years, we have had military of all ranks and rates living here, male and female, from Army privates and Navy seamen to Navy rear admirals and Army generals and everything in between. You've already heard from others about the great need for more senior housing in our city, so I won't say that. You know that Westminster Canterbury has been part of our city for nearly 40 years and has been a good neighbor and responsible tax-paying member of the Virginia Beach community. I want to tell you about the veterans who live on our campus and Westminster Canterbury's community involvement in support of veterans. While our nation celebrates veterans on November 11th, it is Veterans Day every day on our campus. The staff is always respectful and appreciative of those who have served our country, both residents and staff members. Annually, the staff hosts a Military Appreciation Week with special events throughout the week. We have our Army vs. Navy croquet tournament. For the first time in eight years, I'm said to say as a Navy man, the Army won. Giving back to our community is part of Westminster Canterbury's DNA. While we have had limitations this year because of COVID-19, in the past, our volunteers have supported, and vets, an organization providing programs for American veterans, the Hampton Naval Museum, and the Navy-Marine Corps Relief Society, which provides financial, education, and other assistance to members of the naval service, their family members, and survivors when they are in need. I thank you for the opportunity to speak to you this evening. Please vote in favor of the expansion proposal so the city will have room for veterans to live here in the years and decades to come.
Next speaker is Dr. Amir Hajmomenian, sorry. And then the next speaker will be Wes Cusenberry.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Amir Hajmomenian, and I serve as the Medical Director at Westminster Canterbury. After graduating from Eastern Regional Medical School residency program in 2003, I joined Mid-Atlantic Long-Term Care, previously known as Long-Term Care of Virginia, where I've been providing care to elderly patients in skilled nursing, assisted living facilities, and memory care units for past 17 years. I'm currently President of Long-Term Care, Mid-Atlantic, a group of 75 providers delivering care to over 90 facilities in this area. This evening, I'd like to speak to you as a doctor and focus on the need to increase Virginia Beach's ability to serve seniors with Alzheimer's disease and other type of dementia. Other words, the need for memory care bed capacity. Within the next 10 years, all of our nation's 74 baby boomers will become 65 years or older. The most senior among them will be on the cusp of 85. This is based on Kaiser News article January of this year. In Virginia, that 65 and older group represents 14.6% of our population. According to Dr. George Detrick, a professor of psychiatry at UCLA and a member of University of Brain Research Institute, after age 65, the risk of being struck by Alzheimer's disease doubles every five years. So almost half of the population suffers from this disease by age 85. Virginia Beach and the rest of Hampton Road area are already short memory care beds. It's only going to get worse in the next decade. Westminster Canterbury proposed expansion will help address this shortage by increasing the community's capacity to provide memory care with addition of 48 beds, an increased capacity we need now and in future. Under more immediate health challenge, I have had the privilege to work with Westminster Canterbury medical team as they have addressed medical and mental issues resulting from COVID-19 pandemic. We've had no patient, no resident that have tested positive in, with coronavirus in our assisted living or HOI Long-Term Care nursing home. We only had one resident in independent living who tested positive as a result of traveling off-campus for personal reasons. Because of smart policies and procedure that Westminster implemented early on, we've had an effective firewall in place and prevented the spread of disease to other residents. From a mental health perspective, even though the campus was locked down for months, residents did not feel the full impact of isolation because they had their friends and neighbors to socialize with, obviously staying six feet away, wearing masks all the time. The dining venues remained open, and Westminster Resident Service and Therapeutic Recreation Team created nearly 2,000 hours of virtual engagement program and hosted nearly-
Thank you very much.
The next speaker we have, Regra Webbax, is Wes Cusenberry. However, we don't see him online, I just wanted to give an opportunity to see if he was in person, Wes Cusenberry. The next speaker will be Diane Werble, and she's online. Ms. Werble, if you'll begin your comments, just pause two to three seconds, and after Ms. Werble will be Larry Zoller.
My name is Diane Werble, and I live in the Ocean Shore condominium, and I am an opposition to the project as planned. This expansion that Westminster Canterbury is planning will have a direct impact on me. Are your minds made up before this meeting? My brain tells me they are, but my heart tells me that perhaps you will put yourself in my position and listen. Think of how you enjoy your home, think of your investment in your home. I am at a loss as to how this can occur. Why should they be allowed to build such a tall building when other buildings on the Bay have been limited in size? This project will be a violation of these, as already expressed, the density requirements for the area and senior housing building height restrictions. This will have a catastrophic effect on me. Let me explain. I purchased my property when I became widowed as insurance for my old age. The income when I need nursing home care will come from the sale of my property, which I feel will be reduced in value due to a tall building next door. The sun which will be, the sun which will be blocked will reduce my enjoyment of the pool, and more dangerously, the parking lot slash driveway will not be available for use as snow and ice will not melt in the shade. Our street will be overused, making it difficult for us to get in and out of our homes. I ask you, would you want this large building as your neighbor? Would you buy home next to a tall building? Please help us and do not let this expansion as planned go forward. Thank you.
The next speaker is Larry Zoller. After Mr. Zoller is Stephen Anuzeto. Mr. Zoller, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. It is a fact that the applicant believes that they can, by statute, build this high-rise, high-density facility. Question for you tonight, given this season that we are in as a nation with COVID-19, should the applicant be allowed to build a structure that has the potential to put our most vulnerable citizens in harm's way? Is this good leadership or good governance by council? Science proves that COVID-19, as well as all viruses since the Spanish Flu of 1918, spreads through close physical contact and airborne pathogens. Not only believe this high-density facility is wrong now, but medical studies show that a true effective vaccine may not be available for one to two years. Also, I also believe that high-density structures should now and forever be reviewed and studied to allow for safer, low-density structures. The applicant is opposed by 12 homeowners association around this facility due to various unanswered questions of fire access and traffic. This application does not meet the Shore Drive overlay plan, it does not have the recommendation of the Bayfront Advisory Committee or the Shore Drive Community Coalition. It is my hope tonight that council denies this application as presented. I would hope that the applicant would, with best practices, redevelop, redesign the structure to meet the surrounding buildings that they have, as well as the community, and help to stop high-density facilities for the elderly. Please do not put our most vulnerable citizens in harm's way. High-density facilities for the elderly is a thing of the past. COVID-19 has changed our world forever. Please do the right thing, stand up for the elderly citizens of Virginia Beach. Thank you for your time.
The next speaker is Stephen Anuzato, and then Patty Gandy. If you'll please pause two to three seconds, Mr. Anuzato, before beginning your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. My name is Stephen Anuzato. I prepared comments to clarify an objection to the scope of the expansion as proposed. First questions have been raised regarding the senior living health and safety issues review that took place prior to COVID-19. Regardless of the size and scope, we need to appropriately re-review the health and safety of seniors and the staff in light of COVID-19 pandemic. The COVID has demonstrated the weakness in senior facilities across the United States. This assertion is supported by Congressman Loria's June 11 email to all of us on protecting seniors living in nursing homes and work in contamination of these seniors. I quote Congressman Loria's email, "Many of these facilities lack testing, kits, PPE, and sufficient staff to protect residents." She goes on to say, "I'm concerned about the health and safety of the residents and staff in many nursing homes that do not have the resources to follow CMS guidelines." I urge you to avoid acting based on anecdotal comments that you've heard tonight regarding care, and rather seek review by your senior living board, senior living board, and your hospital advisory service board members who have experience in senior care, such as Brian Weinstein. Second, it's been repeatedly cited a need for senior housing using current and historical demographic data. However, this data is no longer relative in a period of post-COVID-19. This is best represented by the current market's expression in senior housing real estate investment trusts. Real estate examples of Ventas, symbol VTRS, traded near $60 in January, is now as low as $42. Brookdale Senior Living Facility, New York Stock Exchange, BKD, traded near $7.50 in January, is now at $2.75. Capital Senior Living Corp., New York Stock Exchange, CSY, traded at $3 in January, 65 cents. All of these facilities are seeing significant distress in the debt markets of their equity and their bonds. Barron's article on May 9, 2020, "Where Do We Find Value in Real Estate Stocks Now?" Quote, "Without a COVID-19 vaccine or treatment, senior living facilities will find it difficult to lure back residents. Skilled nursing facilities, alternates to hospitals, face patient vacancies and a lower growth in units, surgical procedures until they're back to normal." There exists a significant concern in the market, the senior living business model has been permanently altered and damaged. Using prior paradigms and extrapolating without reevaluating the current healthcare demands and prices of workers and the support to the senior occupants in their charge would be a serious grievous mistake by the council.
The next speaker is Patty Gandy. And after Ms. Gandy will be Paul Cassio. Ms. Gandy, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments. Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. I am Patty Gandy, and I live at 717 Cardinal Road and own a home at 2417 Ocean Shore Crescent and a 52-year resident. I'm speaking in opposition of the current proposed 22-story building. The following were comments in support of the expansion by the two Westminster residents who spoke at the Planning Commission meeting. The Vice President Westminster Residents Association said, "Living there is one of the best decisions I've made, and Westminster is one of the best life-plan communities in the country. No one denies either contention, but how they operate for current residents is not the issue, and loving where you live is not a substantial argument to build a 22-story tower. Many people love where they live, that's why they move there and stay there." No one doubts her sentiments, but those personal feelings hardly justify an expansion of the magnitude proposed. Is she inferring that future residents living in the new five-story building will love living there less than those who are in the new 22-story building? No, so why does the tower have to be so tall? Her comments only discussed how long she lived there and how much they enjoyed living there, nothing essential, nothing central to the argument for the proposed expansion. Many of us who live in or own a surrounded condo also consider our residence to be our retirement homes, which will be adversely affected by the new tower. Does our opposition have equal weight in the argument? The President of the Westminster Residents Association says, "There has been enthusiastic support of our residents for expansion plans, and hopefully this opportunity can be available to our friends and neighbors at the most affordable prices possible." Enthusiastic support of residents? How many? He didn't give a number, just a generalization. The 9% of residents who showed up for the meeting, the 50-plus letters of support from residents, business owners, et cetera, only 34 of those letters were from residents, which is less than 5% of the total residents, and 23 of those 34 letters were from form letters with- with only a signature and an address. Not very enthusiastic. The several hundred thousands of dollars entry fee is the most affordable price possible? Hardly. But remember, as the Westminster staff said repeatedly, "It's not for everybody." I ask you vote no. Thank you.
The last speaker is Paul Casio. Mr. Casio, if you'll pause two to three seconds before beginning your comments, please. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. I'm Paul Casio, and I've lived at 2420 Ocean Shore Crescent for 20 years. I oppose the proposed expansion. There were a number of facts and figures presented by the Westminster Canterbury attorney in his opening speech at the Planning Commission hearing that I'd like to challenge. He stated that the Westminster Canterbury has over 700 residents, 97% of the facility is occupied, over 500 people are on the waiting list. He also argued that the units can be affordable if the expansion is immediately contiguous to the existing campus to leverage staff, resources, and so on. Well, all that is fine, but nobody that's opposed the expansion has stated that the construction should not be in the footprint next to the existing campus. We just don't approve the proposed design. The attorney also argued that Westminster Canterbury pays among the highest taxes of any landowner on Shore Drive, and the taxes are anticipated to go from $1 million,1 to over $3 million. Oddly, the attorney stated that the units can be affordable, yet he then states that Westminster residents pay the highest taxes on Shore Drive. Westminster representatives also stated to the Senior Housing Advisory Committee in November 2019 that the significant taxes paid by Westminster Canterbury are beneficial to the city. Well, being affordable and paying high taxes seems contradictory, and it's been reported that the entry fee for a new resident is $800,000. That's hardly affordable. And finally, the attorney claimed that the size of the proposed design is to meet the needs we see coming. He says that even if they build the proposed design in five years, we're still short 100 to 200 units of the city's needs. Well, nobody opposed the expansion questions and need for senior living, just the proposed size, and when did Westminster assume the burden of accommodating all of Virginia Beach's estimated senior living demand in the future? If they're already be short 100 to 200 units, then why do they need to have to build a 22-story building? It's not their sole responsibility to meet the city's expected shortage. I urge you to reject their proposed expansion so that they may develop a more reasonable design. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all the speakers. I confirm with Mr. Nutter, he'll be the one for rebuttal.
Mr. Nutter, rebuttal.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm surprised you could let me talk after all that, so I appreciate that. First to the record, but I'm R.J. Nutter, represent the Westminster Canterbury. And there's a lot of discussion here about different issues, so I'll try to address them one by one and point out the contradictions that you've heard. First, a lot of statements here about safety, that this was not a safe facility, people will die in the hallways, they won't be cared for, somehow fire trucks can't reach up, somehow this won't be designed to accommodate them. Well, the irony is, every person that spoke from Westminster and every expert that's testified from our engineers or architects all say the same thing. Every person you heard testify from Westminster said the same thing. This is a safe, secure facility. I'm safer here than I would be at my home. There are more than 20 senior housing facilities around the country that are taller than Westminster. The fire department here has to approve all these plans. This is a shelter-in-place facility, which means they don't have to evacuate. It's safer for them not to evacuate that building in many instances. Those are the facts, not people's suppositions about how far a ladder reaches. So, and if all those people in those buildings felt unsafe, they wouldn't live there. It's just they could vote with their feet, as we often say, Mr. Moss. Mr. Tower, you know the facility in Norfolk, it's a little bit taller than this one. Very safe, approved by all the city facilities. This will be just the same way. In fact, when we met with, we did meet with the city Shore Drive, excuse me, the Shore Senior Housing Committee, as it's been stated, I was there, none of these people were, and I'll tell you point-blank, the questions we had were predominantly from the public service sector in terms of fire, safety, and rescue. They asked us to relocate several facilities to increase the size of the clearance areas under these areas. They asked for shelter-in-place facilities, all of which were provided. The only questions regarding affordability was the fact that we told them that we do have programs that make it more affordable. But there are other programs around the city that you can rent instead of owning a facility like this if you wish. So, my point to the world was, there are lots of opportunities for different types of senior housing throughout the city. But the idea that Shore Drive, that they didn't have any problem with this is exactly right. If they had, they would report it to you and the staff would report it. In terms of the Bayfront Advisory Commission, we went to them in November of last year, and we went to them because we were scheduled at that time to be on the January Planning Commission. And so, and they did not meet in December. So we rushed in there because of that schedule. And I will tell you, that they did not vote. On rebuttal, I think we get more time, but...
Three minutes.
Well, I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have, because I've got quite a bit of opportunity here.
Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, at this point, do we have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move for approval.
We have a motion. Do we have a second for approval? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Motion to deny.
Okay. Substitute motion to deny? Do we have a second on that? I don't believe we have a second. Okay, so the primary motion. Okay, Ms. Henley? Did you want to, did you have a comment? Okay.
Well, this has been one of those issues that has been so widely discussed, and I assure folks on both sides that I have asked every conceivable question. I did ask why 22 floors. That was one of my first questions. I asked a lot of questions about the safety. I know that all of that is extremely important. I have been very much involved in the senior housing issue for quite a while, before I became a senior myself. And I think that, and I have great concern for all the neighbors, and I feel sure that the folks at Westminster Canterbury are too. But the thing that seems to be consuming the attention is the height of that building, that the independent living building. And I think what we're losing sight of is the need and the value of that additional assisted living and the memory care and the expansion of the memory care facility, which will be allowed because of the increase in independent living. One will allow the other to happen, because certainly the need for more assisted living and the great care that Westminster Canterbury is able to provide is just that factor. And I think the fact that they have been here for over 40 years have a very proven record, and if, and I know that it's not 100% perfect, nobody is, but for 40 years, we have been hearing such good things about Westminster Canterbury and still continue to hear those good things. And the fact that they have cared so well for the people during this pandemic, that is a, and I don't want to jinx anybody by saying the fact that they haven't had the cases there in their assisted living and memory facility, that's phenomenal. Yes, this vulnerable population needs very good care, and Westminster Canterbury provides that. And for all of the neighbors, I do want to say, I certainly don't see this as a precedent setter, which is going to lead then to more of these. This, I think, is a very unique situation. The fact that the city council must determine that there is the need, that it's justified, that it's not going to be a detriment to the neighbors is very important. And this will not, in my opinion, be the precedent setter that you seem to fear. We do have control over it, and I think that's the thing that I hope you will take very genuinely, the fact that we are concerned about all of the neighborhoods and will continue to be concerned about all the neighborhoods. But Westminster Canterbury, I think, has such a proven record, I'm comfortable in saying yes to their application.
Mr. Tower? And then Mr. Moss. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to take a minute just to thank all of the many people who wrote or called me, and I know other council members as well, more than any other issue I've had since I've been on council. I know that every one of you had strong feelings about your views, and I have the utmost respect, both for your feelings and for your views. Just a bit of personal background, I have had experience as a lawyer of some age, having dealt with clients at Westminster Canterbury, and I just want to say that uniformly, lots of extensive transactions with not just residents, but managerial folks, administrators, food service workers, medical personnel, in every case, those folks at Westminster Canterbury have dealt with me and with my clients with the utmost care, respect, and done a tremendous job. They have, they are, Westminster Canterbury is an enormous asset to this community. I've also served on the Board of Directors of the governing body of Harbor's Edge, which is more or less the counterpart in Norfolk of Westminster Canterbury. And there I saw a different aspect, because I was kind of on the inside, and I saw how much time and effort and expertise it takes to assure the physical and financial safety of residents of a continuing care, community retirement, CCRC as they used to be called, apparently now they're more called life plan units, but if I say CCRC, that's what I'm talking about. You know, the financial undertaking of the organizations that operate Harbor's Edge or Westminster Canterbury are incredibly important, because if the organization is not run well, if the financial security of the organization, of its ability to live up to its promises to these residents fails, there is not necessarily any backup. It is a failure. So, every resident depends on the financial security as well as the physical security and safety of the premises. And these are not just simply places for seniors to live, they are places to live for the rest of their lives. A resident can go from the independent living to the assisted living. They can leave and go to the hospital, and they can come back and be assured of a place when they come back. A couple of lifetime partners can stay together in a way that's not feasible in many other circumstances. They do perform a tremendous service, and I know many of you who are opposed to this application don't dispute that, but I think it's important to note that, as Councilwoman Henley says, this really is an exceptional, as far as I'm concerned, and I think she's concerned, an exceptional circumstance. But moving beyond the general level into the more specific, I have not heard any evidence, really, that would support, I've heard fear, that the values of people's properties in the neighborhood would be adversely affected. And I can certainly see if someone, if you were trying to sell your house during construction and there were a lot of noise and dust going on, that it might be more difficult to sell your house, but I have a lot of confidence that the ultimate values of houses in the Shore Drive corridor are going to go nothing but upward. And indeed, I think Westminster Canterbury's continued success there will make people want to continue to locate in those, and I think those values will hold up. Moreover, I think the specific height regulations that we're talking about are justified. I think there's, I think there's, it is a reasonable to build a 22-story building, notwithstanding how, whoa, 22 stories, it's six, sorry, I apologize, six stories higher than the tallest buildings there. I just don't see the difference between, of six stories becoming all of a sudden, it's okay if it's six stories shorter or eight stories shorter even, but it's not with 22. I think a lot of it has to do with the glass. That's a matter of opinion. I think the evidence has been that the glass is not reflective, that it is, that it is safe, and I think the safety issues have been overreacted to. So I think that it will not have significant detrimental effects on the surrounding properties, and I think this application is a reasonable one. I know it doesn't please everyone, but I believe in the long run, the addition of green space, the building taller and thinner, as someone said, makes a lot of sense to me, and I think it'll actually enhance the surrounding property. That's about all I have to say, except to end with saying, those of you who stuck it out here tonight, I want to extend special thanks. You've been extremely, extremely well behaved and really, I admire folks in Virginia Beach care a lot about their homes and their properties. This has been a tough call, but I think, I think I'm confident I'm on the right side in my mind. I respect people who have differing opinions, but I will support this. Thank you. Mr. Moss.
Well, I certainly respect that Mr. Tower is consistent with his vote on the Wolf rezoning down in the southern part of the city, because he consistently takes the view of the few, the people who live in the neighborhood, but you are consistent, and I applaud that. Your logic is the same. But I do find concerns that some who voted against the Wolf thing, because the people in the community told us what it was going to have, and it was a precedent, it was going to set, it was going to deleteriously affect their community, voted with the farmers who lived there and ignored all the professional advice of people who don't live there. And so I often think it's important that we respect people who live there and not make possibly that they're acting out of fear. I think they're acting out of the equity that they have, and we have to remember that we are, in fact, their employer, and our job is to listen to what they say and not try to characterize it good or... try to characterize it, good or bad. But we are here tonight because this wasn't a by right use. It's a conditional use. It's discretionary decision by this body. And do you give benefit of the doubt to the people who are proposing change, or do you give benefit of the doubt to the status quo for the people who will bear the impact? Ultimately, the voters don't get to make that decision tonight, they get to make a decision on November third, and I'm sure they will judge us accordingly to how well they think we have listened to them and how much they think we have represented their concerns appropriately, and that's their role, and that's our role here tonight. I do agree with Mr. Uncle that we heard a lot of stuff tonight that had nothing to do with land use, and he did say this was a land use decision. How good they work, how poorly they work, COVID or not COVID, are not material to the fundamental land use decision. They're not material issues. I didn't, tonight, I'm not going to talk about their IRS nonprofit filing and how they pay all their offices. That's not material to a land use decision. But these people talked about all these documents. I was very impressed when we did our interview for the city manager, and I'm sure many of you were too, when he talked about the community engagement that they used to do these controversial zonings, to get people out to come to the table and work these things out and find a common ground. I think there's pretty good evidence that that did not happen. And so, by our either not deferring or not, we are empowering and sending a signal that we reward that behavior. I don't think that's the signal that we should send, but I respect that people will come to honorable differences. There's lots of facts we could talk about, but the business case for Westminster Canterbury's financial survival is like, am I going to tell that my neighbor whose portfolio went down the roof, that now he's going to be able to build a duplex on his lot, because that's what he needs to keep making sure he can afford to live in his home? No! So, we're not responsible for the underlying financial soundness of Westminster Canterbury any more than we offer a hotel or any other homeowner, or a restaurant, or a bowling alley. That's not the responsibility of this body. It's just not. You could talk about the fact that, yeah, ten thousand people each day, seventy thousand per week, and two hundred eighty thousand per month are turning sixty-five. I'm sixty-six. We could talk about seventy-five million baby boomers, and the mean baby boomer, that's thirty, well, thirty-seven point five million of those has less than a hundred thousand dollars in savings. Fifty-one percent of baby boomers still are making mortgage payments. Do we, as a council, have a responsibility to mitigate all this by making land use decisions that are in contradiction to what the majority view of the neighborhood is? So, if you believe that we do, I'm just telling you, I do not believe that is our obligation. That is not our obligation. And interestingly enough, twenty-four percent of all the people in twenty-twenty-four workforce will be over fifty-five, and people over fifty, back over sixty, have the highest labor participation. There's lots of things going on, but my point being is, they're no more material to this vote than all the goodness of Westminster Canterbury. They're like not on trial, I think they do a great job. But how great a job they do doesn't give you a preference for a conditional use permit that's not consistent with all the documents that have been cited here tonight. We are siding against the neighbors, and they may decide to decide against us, and that's certainly their prerogative, too. So, I think, as we look forward, because this is not any different than the Wolf case, it's not really any different than the Thalia project that was withdrawn, because people are making these larger social need issues and saying they have to be solved at the expense of the status quo with no due consideration or reasonable accommodation to their concerns. And what we heard tonight from all these people, not indifferent, Todd Solomon, I mean, he spoke well, and how much stuff has he worked with? He's telling us this process did not serve the public well, did not serve that community well, and I think it sets us back, Mr. Mayor, and this is not the standard that should be rewarded. So, I think when we look at this, we're exercising our discretion, which we easily could support, to support against the neighborhood, and making that decision based on the social goodness of the current operation, which should not be the basis for our decision. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Just.
Mrs. Henley.
And I don't want to prolong this, I think we've all been here long enough, but I think there is a difference in this one, land use-wise, because the use permit is senior housing, and going along with senior housing is senior care. That's a part of it. That's what an assisted living facility is, is the care of people. And this is such a unique use permit, because it does involve the care, and we do want our most vulnerable people to have the very best care possible. And so, I respectfully disagree, but I think with Mr. Moss, and so much of what he says, as a usual thing, I do agree with, but on this one, we're going to respectfully disagree, it's this care which is so important, and so I think the way a place operates is a very important part of a senior living facility. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yeah, Mr. Rouse.
I wasn't planning on speaking, but I differ from my two colleagues here in perspective. I think Westminster, its reputation precedes itself. I think it's a, it's a great place for our seniors. I think they add asset to our city in making sure we can find senior housing. But my biggest concern, being someone who's from this community as well, who grew up here, who loves the bay and our waterways, to me, I just, the building itself is just too big for me on the bay, coming off of Shore Drive. Listening to a lot of the community, they serve good points as well. Again, I think it is a good development if we could lower the height of the building, but twenty-two stories on the bay, I think it's too much. You know, when I travel around our city, I cycle a lot, at least I did before it started getting cold. I'm used to the skyline on the oceanfront, I'm used to the skyline in town center, I'm even used to the skyline on the Lesnar Bridge and Shore Drive. To me, a twenty-two-story building would just stick out like a sore thumb, and I can get a conscious vote to approve that.
Okay. Anybody else? Let me just say, and I'll be brief, you know, since I've been on council, we've all been on council, the toughest things we have to ever decide are land use issues, you know, with neighborhoods, decisions, precedents, and things of that nature, you know, it's sometimes a King Solomon decision, because you hear the positives, you hear the negatives, but ultimately, you have to do ultimately what's right and then think, you know, in terms of the long term. Being a healthcare professional, a home care physical therapist back in the nineties when I was in graduate school, and my job now, I've been in every neighborhood, thousands of homes throughout this great city, including Ocean Park, and, you know, once again, Ocean Park has other needs, too. With sand replenishment, your dunes are unstable, you know, I get to see what's all over. And the thing is, if we can bring a value added to the community, which would generate tax income that we're going to need, I don't want to say it's a business decision, but it's got to be a practical decision. And I think just going forward, you know, being seventy myself, and, you know, being a health policy type person, that we're going to have an exponential need for quality healthcare coming. And I see too many people living by themselves that are highly at risk, you know, for falls and everything, and providing safe environments, you know, are a good thing. And, you know, once again, whatever decision, you know, I am sure that Westminster Canterbury, once it's built and operational, will be that good neighbor, but once again, you know, we listen to people, but, you know, council has to make some tough decisions sometime, and, but once again, we, as Mr. Tower said, we appreciate people coming out and talking. That's why we had the meeting in this building, because we want to make sure everybody was heard, and we thank you for your respect and consideration. Okay, at this point, Madam Clerk.
Sorry, the motion is to approve. Councilmember Berluci?
Yes.
Councilmember Henley?
Aye.
Councilmember Moss?
Aye.
Councilmember Rouse?
Aye.
Councilmember Tower?
Aye.
Councilmember Wooten?
Aye.
Mayor Dyer?
Aye.
By a vote of five to two, you approve the application of Westminster Canterbury on Chesapeake Bay.
Okay. Okay, at this point, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.